Welcome everybody to the agenda of the city council call session and regular meeting of the city of Coachella. The city council sitting as a Coachella sanitary district, Coachella fire protection district, Coachella finance and authority, Coachella education and government access cable channel corporation, Coachella water authorities, accessory agencies, the Coachella redevelopment agency, and the Coachella parks and recreation foundation. Today is December eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Gabriel, have you heard from council members?
I have not.
She, I mean, she's gonna be about ten minutes late from five o'clock.
That's fine. We can get going. She'll be here instead of big bro. Um, we're gonna go ahead and uh get the, please note for the record, the roll call, Mr. City Attorney. And now, is there any changes to the agenda?
There are, um, well, where there are no more changes to the agenda made to bear.
Any changes, Mr. City Manager, to the agenda?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, can we get an approval of the agenda? Motion to approve. The motions are second.
All second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will now move into, actually, is there public comments on close session items? I'd like to address the city council on any close session items. Seeing none, we'll move into close session.
Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our city council meeting. We are going to reconvene from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, are there any announcements?
No report from closed session, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask our city manager if you can lead us on the pledge of allegiance.
Yes. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start by moving on the canvas of the votes. This is adoption of the ballots. This is adoption of resolution number 2024-63, reciting the facts of the general municipal election on November 5th, 2024, declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law. Council, you do have your agenda. Is there a motion to approve resolution 2024-63?
Motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There is a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Aye.
Councilmember Galarza?
Aye.
Mayor Protemvirgen?
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez?
Aye. Motion carries, and with that, we have recognized and have certified the election results. And I want to congratulate all of those who were on the ballot this year and thank those, thank everyone who was on the ballot and congratulate those that got a were successful on the ballot this year. But before we bring you all up to take your oath of office, I want to recognize our outgoing elected officials, and that is council member Neftali Galarza. So I'm going to ask the council if you could all join me in front while we. Neftali, I don't know if you want to bring your family up here. I know you brought your family. Lucero and the kids and your cousins and brothers here and had a big, big family. Let me go ahead and welcome everybody up here. And get daddy back full time. Welcome. Welcome. Make some room here. Let me go ahead and read. This is the City of Coachella, California proclamation. Whereas Neftali Galarza, born to immigrant farm workers and raised in Oasis, an unincorporated community in the eastern Coachella Valley, has a strong education and professional background rooted in public service. He holds a master's in public administration from California Baptist University and a bachelor's of arts in political science with a minor in labor studies from the University of California Riverside. And whereas Neftali lives in Coachella with his partner Lucero and their children, Denali, Ari, Neftali, and Gayel. And serves as a council member for the city of Coachella, where he has champion initiatives that directly benefit the underserved and support long-term community growth. And whereas notably, Neftali has played a pivotal role in establishing the Coachella Immigrant Families Recovery Program in partnership with the Mission Asset Fund. This groundbreaking basic income program offers financial support and resources to immigrant families previously excluded from federal assistance during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas furthermore, his vision, and Neftali has also forged a partnership with One Futures Coachella Valley to facilitate a paid internship program at City Hall. This provides invaluable government work experience to college and high school students, connecting academic learning with real-world applications and fostering an interest in public sector careers. And whereas, Neftali also serves as Director of Community Engagement and Partnership under the leadership of Dr. Edwin Gomez, Riverside County Superintendent of Schools. Previously, he was a board member for the Coachella Valley Unified School District and Director of Community Outreach for the California Alliance for Renewable Energy Solutions. He has also held positions in program coordinator as the council, in the Council of Mexican Federation and Regional Organizer at the Southwest Voter Registration Education Project, demonstrating a commitment to community development and civic engagement. And now therefore, I, Stephen A. Hernandez, mayor and the city council of the city of Coachella, by the powers vested in us, do by hereby recognize council member Neftali Galarza and urge all citizens of the city of Coachella in joining me to commemorate his commitment into serving the city of Coachella and our beautiful community. Thank you. I'm gonna give you this, Neftali, and I'm also going to give you the mic.
Well, thank you all so much. Thanks to my family for being here, present, and you know, serving as a council member has been something that, you know, it's been an honor of a lifetime. You know, congratulate my colleagues who just got reelected and the new council member. You know, the responsibility we have here in ensuring that our residents are well represented and the and the, I don't need the mic. And the community, you know, sure we serve the folks that we're here to represent, especially the family, I have loved it for my mother, my father, my brothers, my wife, and my kids, both my president and my friends that are present and all of you who are members, like, you know, anyone. I got involved when I was in high school, just looking to get involved, and Steven was running for council, Laura was running for mayor, and my husband was running for assembly, and I started as campaigner in here and out here. Many people that are here know that you can also be here and ensure that your vision for our community is enacted. We can all do it and make a difference for the community. So thank you all so much for, you know, being there with us these last four years. It's been an honor. You know, if my parents immigrated from Guerrero, Mexico, and in one generation, we can do this, like Steven's family that immigrated, like all of your families that immigrated. If we can be here in one generation, I know the possibilities of my more privileged kids will be endless, and so I'm very honored to be here. Thank you.
Your very own clock. There's a running joke is Neftali here on time, and so.
I wanted to carry the key. Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
We are now going to administer the oath of office to our newly elected officials. And we're going to start with our city treasurer.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
So I'd like to welcome Ms. Myra Perez and her family. Her husband, Stephen. Wow.
And she's going to be sworn in by Pastor Nate. So we welcome you up. You can go ahead and just.
You can hold your present.
Yes.
What a delight. You know, the Bible says something interesting. Bible says in Proverbs that when the righteous rule, the people rejoice, and when the wicked rule, people are in despair. And so, Myra, we're excited for you and the season that God has blessed you with. So I guess you'll repeat after me. I, Myra Perez, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the state of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well yeah, you will well, and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Blessings.
Myra, the floor is yours. You may take that mic and you can introduce your family as well. And then you may take your seat right there.
My family, thank you so much, everyone, for being here. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve my community. This is a very important day for me and very honored to be here and just to have this, this day to, that you guys have entrusted me. And I'm looking forward to serving you at the greatest capacity. And so, thank you again, and my family is here to support. So I wanted them to come up so that they could take a quick picture.
Fun facts, the Perez family is a longtime Coachella family. Their, Myra's, what would be her grandpa-in-law was the mayor at one time, and her father-in-law served on the planning commission. Fun facts. Myra, you may take your seat. You. We also have a newly elected, well, it's not newly, just reelected city clerk. And so, we are going to have. Thank you.
I, Angela Zapata, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the state of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you. And I just want to say thank you, everyone, for continuing to trust and support me in this position. I really do love public service, which is why I continue to be here. I know you see me alone right now, but that is because I am a single mom, as many of you know, and my kids are heavily involved in sports. So my 17-year-old son is on his way to pick up my daughter from her club volleyball practice, and she's had two practices today. So that's why they're not here today. I support my kids in every, you know, every endeavor that they want to be in because I want them to continue to be successful, and I hope to be that example to them. And I just want to thank my community and my friends all up here because they have been like family to me since I've stepped foot into this position. So thank you.
Congratulations. With that, we are going to introduce our newly elected council member, Yadiya Perez, and invite her up here to pick the vote. And her oath will be done by.
Stephanie. Stephanie Barbosa.
Stephanie Barbosa.
All righty. Ready? Okay. Ayadira Perez, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the state of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for being here. First of all, I'd like to thank God for this day. I'd like to thank my family for all their support, my husband, my children. It was a lot of work for their patience, long days, long nights. I want to thank my family, my parents, my brother, my sisters. I want to thank my friends who helped me, who went out and canvassed with me, who helped knock on doors, everybody who supported me throughout this campaign. Thank you. Primarily, buenas noches. Le quiero dar gracias a Dios por este día. Le quiero dar gracias a mi esposo, a mis hijos por todo su apoyo, por su trabajo, por su pacencia de largos días, largas noches. Le quiero dar gracias a mis padres, a mis hermanos, a mis amigos, a todos los que me ayudaron en mi campaña a tocar puertas. No era fácil, era mucho trabajo, pero gracias a Dios aquí estamos y espero a trabajar con todos. Gracias.
If Yadiya's family would like to come up to take a picture?
Welcome. You guys can get a little closer to the dais. Get up here. You gotta. It will be yours for at least four years. Yadiya, I'm going to ask you to come up here and take a seat. You're going to, you're going to be seated where Denise is seated, and Denise will be sitting next to me. All right, with that, we will move on to council member Delgado. Congratulations on her reelection. And we'll ask her to take her oath of office as well.
Accompanying council member Delgado is Abril, Eliana, Carlos Delgado, and Lupe Acosta.
All right.
I, Denise Delgado. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California. And I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and I will well, well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
So this is my daughter and, and my parents. And I get a little emotional because this is my second term, my third campaign. And they've been there for me every single day. I've been very, very blessed to have really good parents. They're very kind and they're very hardworking. They know a lot of folks here, so they make their way here. And they kind of just dismiss me even though I'm taking the oath. But they still, you know, that's just the way they are. How we're, we're raised really does take a kind of shape who we are as adults. And my parents are always very giving, they're very selfless. They're very community-oriented. They always did for others. It was normal to have people at our house living there for, for a bit until they found them a job or a place to stay. They're still like that to this day. I'll give you an example. I was with my mother. We're gonna go eat at a restaurant. She stops. And I don't know what she's doing. She gets off and there was a homeless woman walking. And she says, honey, honey, do you need shoes? And she comes back to the car and grabs shoes. And she gives it to me. And then she goes back and she says, honey, honey, do you need water? And then she comes back and she gives them water. That's who, that's who they are. That's all I know is just to be kind and hardworking and grateful for everything that we do. I want to thank everyone who has continued to support me. I see many people here and I'm forever grateful to you for allowing me to make decisions on your behalf, on people who work here, people who live here. I'm just honored that I, that have, that you have even taken the time to endorse me and support me. There are many organizations here that I want to just give a special thanks to. We have the Riverside Sheriff's Office. We have the captain, the lieutenant, and the sergeant. Thank you to all the, the officers in the back. Thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you for allowing me and supporting me through all this time. A big thank you to Cal Fire and I see the, the chief back there. A big thank you to Cal Fire as well for all that they do for us and the unions and Riverside Sheriff's Association. I want to thank many of the businesses that are here today. We have a large ranging amount of businesses here. Small businesses, people who are developing the city, people who invest in the city, people who believe in the city of Coachella. Thank you for your investment. Thank you for believing in the city of Coachella. We have people from the soccer league as well who have committed years and decades to the city of Coachella to making sure that children and adults have a safe and mentally healthy place to, to be able to play in. And I want to also thank Wayman Furman in the back, who is a council member for the city of Indio. There are a lot of folks here, some of my volunteers that, that have helped me out. We have some of them sitting here. They're still so kind. They come in showing up with their, their, my T-shirt that I was campaigning with. Thank you, guys. For everybody else, the same thing. Thank you. And I'm grateful for your support. I'm grateful for all the support organization businesses. This is what, this is what Coachella is. It's not just me, it's all of us. So a big thank you to all of you and a big thank you to my parents and my family. Always, I'm not an emotional person, but this is a big deal for us. My parents have gone through a lot. My, my dad is our biggest and our greatest volunteer. He, he's every day putting up yard signs, fixing them. He does this every single day. He's, that's just who he is. So thank you to, to all of you. I love you very much and thank you for always supporting me.
In the back, if you don't mind, Mihal, come up here.
And congratulations and welcome up here to the dais. And lastly, we will administer the oath as well. And so I'm gonna ask my family to join me, my, my wife and Adriana, my two daughters, Camila and Isabella, if you can come up here. And then I also have my brothers. You could join me up here too. My extended family, my sister-in-law, Beatrice, my sister-in-law, Christina. And we will do the oath of office. And then I'll invite my campaign team as well, Sikino and Jasmine. But I saw Stephanie and others that were here as well. And we could take a big photo, but I will make my way up. And Carlos will be administering my oath. This is gonna be my eighth time in 18 years taking the oath of office.
I, Stephen A. Hernandez, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservations or purpose of evasions and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you. I want to thank everybody for being here. For those that are here to support your loved ones and, and folks that you supported in the selection. For those that are here to support myself and my family, just thank you for being here. It means a lot to all of us. Being in public service is, is an awesome thing. Being in public service is something that is, that is a lofty thing, but it's a lot of responsibility. And a lot of, we take this obligation very seriously. We take what we do and for the betterment of the city of Coachella very, very seriously. And, and we've made it, we've made a difference. Nobody can say that Coachella hasn't changed and it's not going in the right direction. In fact, I think the best days are yet to come for our beautiful city. We have a, a lot of work to do as a community, as a city. The world is large. The nation is changing. The state of California is changing, our counties is changing. But yet, the people and the needs of our community are also growing. And so for us, it's important that we focus in on building, rebuilding our economy, rebuilding and bringing in new housing and also thinking about healthcare and how we can really change the lives of our residents. Being in local government, it's all about you. It's, it's where the rubber meets the road. And we feel this obligation, it's an awesome thing. We take it like very, very seriously. I, I want to just take a moment and, and, and talk a little bit about just the rich history of the city of Coachella. We've been here since 1946. And a lot of people wonder, you know, hey, you know, like you got this little eastern Coachella city. And what's amazing about Coachella, it's all of the families here. It's all of the people that are here in the city of Coachella. And I really, really believe that each and every single one of you, families or friends or businesses, that it's your job and our job to dream together about the possibility of what this city can be. You have a plate, you have a place here in this city. If you want to open up a small business, you're welcome. If you want to open up a, a, a little daycare or, or whatever it is, make Coachella your home. If you want to educate your families here and educate your, your, your kids, this is your home. If you want to be involved in government and civics, we invite you to participate. If you are somebody who wants to move here and open up or get a, get a first-time home or get a second home or invest here, Coachella is your home. And so part of our work is to dream together. Part of our work is to realize the potential of this beautiful city. And so I am deeply honored for 18 years of office and two more that the residents of this city have bestowed on me. And I believe again that the best is yet to come. And with that, I'm gonna invite some of my campaign team to join me. Kino, Jasmine, Stefania as well. Just so we could take a photo and I want to thank you all for being here. And the election time and season is now over. It's, uh, it's time to get to work and to do the business of our beautiful city. Thank you. Let me thank my family as well because there are a lot of nights where dad comes, comes, comes home late. And, and without the support and the bedrock of my kids and my wife, we couldn't do this job and we've been doing it for 18 years. And I thank you, I love you. And I think the community is appreciative of, of you lending me to them. So thank you to my brothers. For those that don't know, you know, we grew up, we were raised by our grandparents. And we grew up right there on 52 in Las Palmas. Our parents were, grandparents were migrant farm workers. They were placeros. We came from Sinaloa, Mexico. My mom is a schizophrenic bipolar. My father left when we were four years old. And through all of the agony came a lot of wisdom and came a lot of, you know, perseverance. So I'm very, very thankful to my brothers and to my family for everything that they have done to keep us moving forward and keeping us with the right intentions and right direction for the city of Coachella again. Thank you so much. We look forward to doing this amazing job and work ahead of us. All right, let's take a photo. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and take a five-minute recess just in case some of the candidates want to take some photos and just say hi and bite of people. Some of the electeds, I should say, not candidates electeds. I want to ask the council to reconvene. It's been twenty minutes. Still trying to get you guys home. Get them out of there. Have some champagne or something. We're going tomorrow, Riverside. You gotta drive up. It's been getting worse and worse. Have you started looking at? I'm a photobomb in the back. I was like, I'm a photobomb in the back. Um, have you started looking at, like, putting together like a little, a little car? Yeah, but changing the car, bro. You gotta help our program. You know, Tesla. Because we need to get success in that program. That's, well, they're starting.
Somebody screamed at me some kind of nice.
What'd they say?
Well, you know, my last.
All right, the council reconvenes from our administration of the offer, those ceremonies. Again, I want to thank everybody for being here and we will get back into business. We'll move now on item number six. And this is the nomination for the position of mayor pro temp. At this point, the floor is open for nominations. Are there any nominations for the position of mayor pro temp?
Nominate Councilwoman Delgado.
There's a motion on the floor to nominate council member Delgado as the mayor pro temp. Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there a subsequent motion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you.
Now do a presentation on Coachella Residential Engagement Academy update. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon, mayor and members of the city council. Anay Fernandez, management analyst for the Development Services Department, and I'll be presenting on this item tonight. Okay, so earlier this year in July, our council did approve the second Resident Engagement Academy for the city. Again, the goals of the academy were to develop an avenue for the city to communicate its roles and functions, increase engagement, provide residents with input opportunities, and inform our residents how they can continue contributing to the city as well. Our sessions this year ran from October first to November nineteenth. They happened on Tuesdays from sixteen PM at the Coachella library. And we did have a session on a Saturday in the morning. So here's a list of the sessions that were presented during the modules. A few items to highlight is that a lot of them did include presentations, but we also try to make it as interactive as possible. So on the utility session, we did include a field trip on a Saturday morning to the sewer plantation or sewer plant and as well as the water wells and the lift station. For our voter education session, we had the Secretary of State present as well as the Riverside County Register of Voters. And then for the development services session, we did have a mock planning commission meeting where some of our residents were able to play as planning commissioners and we had the rest of the participants as a public hearing. So that was very neat. They got to experience that. Hopefully that encouraged them to apply as well as learn how we manage those sessions or those meetings. And then for public safety, we did have our Riverside County sheriffs as well as fire and the district attorney present on that session. And this year, we did have twenty-two graduates. So at the end of the sessions, we did have them do a survey. They did inform us of how we could do better, also what they enjoyed from the academy. So some things to highlight are that ninety-four percent of the respondents did indicate that their knowledge level of the city was very low or low before participating in the academy. And then they indicated that eighty-two percent indicated that their knowledge level of the city was either high or very high after completion. And then eighty percent indicated there is a very high likelihood that they'll play a volunteer role in the city and the remainder said that there would be a high possibility. So the majority did learn a lot of new things about the city and they would like to participate after completing the academy. So we did have an academy graduation where the citizens or the residents were informed how they could continue participating civically. They were awarded and recognized for their leadership and dedication to the academy this year. Something a little bit different about this academy is that we did have a community group project, which was this past Saturday morning. We did, or they did lead a community cleanup project, so that was really fun. There's a code kiss on this home that requires a lot of general cleanup. It was very messy. So we had participants from last year. This year, we had fire help us. We had staff who also helped and then we had our councilwoman Stephanie Vida can help as well. So that was very fun and it helped a community member and it made a difference in the community as well. So here are some images from that. And then here's a before and after of the home. So we did a good amount of cleaning this weekend. So it's very nice. And then this is just a receive and file item and then we're happy to take any feedback from our city council. And I want to thank our staff as well for participating and our city council for allowing us to have another academy this year. So hopefully we're able to have another one next year as well. Thank you.
Correction, it's just a presentation. Do we have to take, we don't have to take a connection? Correct. Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Sorry?
Any questions, council?
Any feedback?
I think, I think we're doing a great job in terms of, you know, engaging the community. I, I'd like to see how as the amount of graduates grow, how we can do a good job or a better job of continuing to engage them, to participate, for example, in like surveys that we need or for example workshops that we're doing. Because for, you know, right now, we're doing a survey for the train station. And it's important that we hear from our residents and just think about how we can keep them engaged as this process or as they graduate. So that's, that's my comment. But just think through that and thank you for all the work. You're doing a great job. I've gotten some really good feedback.
Oh, great, thank you.
Thank you, Anay. You're doing really well. I think that seeing you guys out in the community cleanup, it was really inspiring just to see all the great work that you guys are doing and Renee, you know, also you had some of your crew there too and just putting in work on a Saturday. I got there, I think, a little bit after eight-thirty and you guys had been there since probably six AM. So it was really nice and the, you know, the family came out and the daughter of the elderly woman who lives there, she, you know, she was crying a little bit and just thanking the city. And I think not a lot of people take into consideration the impact that something like that will have on a family member and in a person. And I think it speaks very clearly what our intentions are as a city and as a community is. We want to help people. We don't always just want to say you're not in compliance, you know? How can we help you if you're not? What can we do? How can we be there for you? So just want to say thank you so much for all your great work and to Renee and everybody who was there on Saturday. City manager was there as well. So thank you guys for everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
We'll move on to autism certification presentation.
I think they're, I think they'll be presenting online.
Hi, everybody. I'm Meredith Teakin. I'm the president of IBCCES and I'm excited to share some information with you this evening about the program. So I'm just going to kind of overview the process. I have had a couple of conversations with folks at the city and my organization IBCCS has been working with a few of the other city municipalities in the area. We are, we have also been working with Visit Greater Palm Springs on some accessibility and inclusion initiatives for tourism. So this would obviously kind of add to the already amazing initiatives that are happening in the area. So the conversation is about potentially having the city become a certified autism center through my organization. It's a program that we offer. We are a credentialing body. So I'm going to talk just a little bit about what that looks like. Just to, you know, set the stage as far as why we focus on autism and sensory needs. We know that one in six people have a sensory need. So whether that person might be on the autism spectrum or have another kind of sensory processing difference, they might have anxiety, PTSD, Down syndrome, a whole range of, of, you know, possibly conditions or needs. The point is one in six people have those sensory needs or sensitivities and there are lots of things that we can do to make life easier for those folks, whether they be residents, community members. The point is one in six people have those sensory needs or sensitivities and there are lots of things that we can do to make life easier for those folks, whether they be residents, community members, visitors to the area. We also know that one in thirty-six kids in the US are diagnosed with autism. That's the CDC number that they track on a national level in California. The number is actually one in twenty-two. But we know that that number is fairly conservative because there are millions and millions of adults that are on the spectrum that never got a diagnosis or are getting diagnosed later in life. And, you know, again, those are just the individuals that are able to access a diagnosis. So the point of this is there are obviously lots of needs within the accessibility realm as far as community inclusion and making sure that folks feel welcomed and understood. But autism and sensory needs are very prevalent and play a huge part in that. So that's why we have this program. My organization IBCCS, like I mentioned, is a credentialing body, so we focus on training and certification and providing other supports to organizations and professionals that want to provide better services and care to individuals that have a variety of needs. So we work all over the globe. I'm actually talking to you tonight from Florida. So hi from the East Coast. But again, we do always include not only clinical and subject matter experts to put together our programs, but of course self advocates sharing their lived experience. So all of our program focuses on sharing knowledge, actionable strategies on how we can, you know, make folks' lives easier. And that's coming not only from subject matter experts, like I said, but also from the lived experience of those that are autistic or neurodivergent or whatever the case may be for that program. So our whole mission is just to again, provide those supports so that at the end of the day, everybody has a better quality of life. So what this process would look like is the city as an entity, as an organization can become certified. So we would have eighty percent or more of the public facing staff that work for the city go through a training program, which I'll talk a little bit more about. Once that number is met as a minimum requirement, obviously a hundred percent would be great, but eighty percent is the minimum. Then we would grant the designation, announce the certification, and then we would provide support for the lifetime of the credential. As far as our training for that, for that program, we have a couple of different levels of training, but it's meant to be delivered online, asynchronous, self-paced. It's available twenty-four seven. It's meant so that folks can complete it within their busy schedules. Obviously, we work with a lot of professionals that have lots of other duties. But the idea is it's going to focus on, first of all, what autism is, kind of busting some of those myths or misunderstanding about autism and sensory needs, talking about some of the common behaviors or characteristics or things that might help folks make feel, make them feel more comfortable. Talking about communication strategies, some basic safety information, and then also the, the needs and the impacts from these types of, you know, actions that can make folks not only feel more welcomed and understood, but also just make communication more effective. At the end of the day, we want to empower staff. We want to make sure that folks know that we understand them and we are empathetic with them. We do have a couple of different types of training, so everybody doesn't take the same level of training depending on their role. There would be a couple of different options, but they're all going to focus on these same core competencies. Some of the training is just a little bit longer, depending if you're a manager or supervisor. We also do have, you know, a couple of other specialized programs, for example, for aquatic settings or law enforcement and things, things of that nature. So the benefits is obviously we want to make sure that, you know, residents and visitors to the area feel more welcomed. Once you're certified, this is something that we would want you to, you know, let people know that you went through this process so that they see that this is something else that you're adding to, you know, your, your toolkit or your repertoire as far as inclusion and accessibility, making sure that they know that the city is focusing on how to enhance those communication lines. But it also empowers staff and helps management become more effective, just like those numbers represent many, many folks within the community. It also represents our coworkers and our employees as well. So we always hear feedback that staff are more empowered. It opens up those lines of communication internally as well. We really want to make sure that again, we're kind of improving the experiences of the folks that we're serving. So what this specifically would look like, again, these are some numbers that were given to me from a previous conversation. But this is just to give an idea of what this would look like. So again, eighty percent or more of the public facing staff that are employed by the city would go through one level of training depending on their role. Once that eighty percent number is met, we would certify the city as an entity and that you would become a certified autism center. And we would work with you to announce that, let folks know, hey, the city is focusing on this. This is an achievement that they've earned. And then IBCCS is here to support you for the lifetime of that credential. So typically you would need to renew the certificate every two years because just like any good professional credential, it's not a one-time thing. We want to make sure that folks are learning and keeping up with ongoing information, best practices. So at least every two years, we would provide updated training and you would renew the certification. If you choose not to renew, obviously that's fine. You're not required. You're not locked into that renewal. But that updated training does need to be completed in order to continue to stay certified and meet the requirements. Within that two-year timeframe though, IBCCS is here providing supports, resources, additional learning opportunities. We're here for questions or you know, really anything related to other strategies and ways to make the, the city more inclusive. So we're your basically your on-call support experts for anything related to autism and sensory needs. And then again, at renewal time, we would honor the initial pricing, look at the staff numbers and then renew if that was something you all chose to do. We really want this to be part of something that's sustainable and long-term as far as making sure that it's, you know, something that's not only utilized and helpful now, but it starts getting built into the DNA of everything else that you're doing. And so it just becomes part of, you know, the other types of initiatives that you do to make sure that you're providing, you know, a great community experience. We have worked with other cities and entities in the area. La Quinta and Palm Springs and a few others Indian Wells in the area. So this would be kind of a way to join this sort of wider initiative in, in the community at large. But yeah, we would really love to work with you all. And again, just wanted to give everybody kind of an overview of what that would look like. And here to answer questions if you need to. I did just want to put my email up here. If there are follow-ups or anybody wants to know more about what we do, obviously happy to answer those offline as well, but would love to have you all part of the initiative.
Thank you for your presentations. Any questions?
No, you mentioned you're working with the Visit Greater Palm Springs. And I know that they mentioned that before. With the, with the trainings, what would they require? I know that you laid it out, but how much time would it require staff outside of the office?
Yes. So it, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be outside the office. The entry level training program for most of the staff, that's about a half an hour program. They do have to take a comprehension exam at the end and pass with an eighty percent or better. And, but they do get a study guide for that. And then for the leaders, for the supervisors and managers, that's, I would say about an hour and a half to two hours worth of training. It's similar content. It's just a little bit more in-depth. And so really, but even with that longer program, they can stop and start and come back to it and not lose their place. So they don't have to do it all in one sitting. They can fit it into their workday or fit it into their other duties. And they can complete that over a couple of sittings if they want to. So an organization of this size, typically I would say from beginning of certification process to getting certified to meeting that eighty percent is probably maybe a thirty-day process. If you give folks, you know, access to the training and say, hey, we want you to complete this by this date, they can kind of do it at their own pace. That's usually what, what organizations do.
Any other questions? I, I thank you for your presentation. I, I don't, I think, I think this is great. I just don't know what trainings or, or why. Generally, I think doing this is great, but I, I think HR should review this, Gabriel, and, and you're talking about employee training.
Correct.
And so I'm not sure that we approve.
You, you would approve the, we were bringing back the item for the allocation of the cost, but we are doing our review of our MOUs and HR to make sure it's acceptable training, but we feel that it, it will be, it will be.
As you do that analysis thoroughly, then you can get back to us. Cause I mean, it's
Yeah, this is just the presentation to, you know, once we get the information, we'll bring this back as an action item.
Gabriel, are you saying that in addition to what the total is here, that you, that it would incur additional costs?
No, no, the, I think that, that rate is per employee or is that total, the total cost? That you just showed us.
The pricing that I just showed would be the total investment for the training and the certification, which would be good for two years. So that's, that's it from our perspective.
Okay. So it's pretty affordable. And so once we get, go through our legal review and HR review, they'll bring this back as an item.
Thank you, Gabriel. Thank you for your presentation. We'll move on to written communications. Are there any written communications? We'll move on to consent calendar. It's recommended that consent items be acted upon simultaneously. I do want to pull item number sixteen and I will be abstaining from item number thirteen. Item number sixteen, this is a adopt resolution two thousand twenty-four dash sixty-seven to increase the transit occupancy tax, TOT rate effective July one. And can we get a small presentation? Cause we were able to pass our measure Y. And I want to thank the team who put this together and Councilmember Vidicant, who was instrumental in meeting with some of the directors that led that campaign effort here. And I want to thank you, Selena and the hospital others who left Ali, Councilmember Galarza as well. They were successful. At, at it girls, at it guys, you know, good, good job. You increased the, you got support.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Selena Jimenez, Director of Economic Development. So the item before you is adopt resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash sixty-seven to increase the transient occupancy tax rate or TOT rate to thirteen percent pursuant to measure Y effective January one, two thousand twenty-five. And basically, so a little history here. So for many years, the city of Coachella has imposed a TOT tax, which is a general excise tax levied on a guest temporary occupancy at a hotel, a motel or short-term vacation rental within the city. And until recently, the maximum authorized TOT rate was nine percent. And when we did a comparison across the Coachella Valley, the city of Coachella had the lowest TOT rate across the Coachella Valley. So the table like had us at the lowest and then after that, everybody was either, either at twelve or thirteen percent. So resolution number two thousand twenty-four sixty-seven is proposing an amendment to the Coachella Municipal Code to increase the maximum rate of the TOT from nine percent to up to thirteen percent, which is the voter-approved percentage max. And to make technical updates, for example, definitions and terms, third-party renters appeals and refund procedures to the municipal code. And so, so the city council placed measure Y before the voters on the November fifth, general municipal election ballot. And in addition to making certain technical updates to the ordinance, measure Y authorizes the city council to increase the maximum transient occupancy tax or TOT rate from nine percent to up to thirteen percent. And measure Y was approved by Coachella voters fifty-two point zero six percent to forty-seven point ninety-four percent who said no. And so basically tonight, the council certified the election results. And so now the council has this resolution before them to adopt the resolution, increasing the TOT rate to up to thirteen percent. And then January first, two thousand twenty-five, the new TOT rate would go into effect. And so just to reiterate that the council has the authority to increase the TOT under section four point two eight, one five zero, the city council has the authority to adjust the TOT rate to any figure that is within the voter-approved thirteen percent maximum. Chapter four point two eight is the city's TOT. It is a chapter that covers TOT in the municipal code. And then measure Y was specifically changed by, or section four point two eight, zero three zero was specifically changed by measure Y to increase the TOT from nine percent to a maximum of thirteen percent. And so right now, the current rate again is at nine percent. And so this new TOT rate does not automatically, automatically adjust. The council must take action to adjust the rate. And so we have, we will be deploying some communication to short-term vacation rental owners, you know, on our website and even via mail and through Deckard, who handles our short-term vacation rental program or helps us manage that program. And so we will be releasing that information through BBNK, who is helping us draft the, the notification so that we don't miss anything and we don't misstate things. And so, so yeah, that concludes the presentation.
Well, I just wanted to highlight that and say congratulations. I know, I think we're expecting maybe three hundred K a year in total increase. And obviously it's going to go to core services, mainly public safety. But I just wanted to acknowledge your guys' work. These things just don't happen. There is a group effort of people that were out there campaigning to make sure that this measure got passed. It squeaked by, but a win's a win.
Yes.
So congratulations. And with that, can we take a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Selena, with the, I think it's a little bit more than three hundred K, but what?
Yeah, over time, it'll, it'll be in the millions. For now, you know, if we just take what our current TOT revenue is and we take that percentage, we're going to see about three hundred and fifty thousand a year for now. Like if we just stick with this one rate, but in the future, we could be in the millions, actually.
But at what percent? So what?
Oh, if we assume thirteen percent, assuming the highest.
We're going to go from nine percent to thirteen percent, straight?
Yes. Unless the council chooses to select a different rate, as long as you don't go beyond thirteen percent. But staff's recommendation is that we go with thirteen percent, like so that we could be in alignment with the rest of the Coachella Valley and even Southern California. We looked at.
I know some of the cities range. I know some of them are eleven percent. I don't think everybody's at thirteen percent.
There was only, actually the lowest was twelve percent. Everybody else is at twelve and thirteen. And then when we looked at other Southern California cities, there's even other, I'm not kidding, like San Diego is at eighteen percent. And then like, like in Orange County, I looked at Orange County and everybody was probably at like fifteen percent. We're really low here and, and we, and again, I, the council can set the rate, but the staff recommendation is that we go for the gold and try to adjust it to thirteen percent. And, and it'll be in keeping with the rest of the Coachella Valley, actually. Just one city was at twelve percent and everybody else was at thirteen percent.
I think since we're going straight from nine percent to thirteen percent, but the communication is really important because they're going to feel that four percent increase. And I know when we were bringing it too, because we wanted to be competitive with some of the other cities. I thought it was a thirteen percent threshold and then we can obviously work within, you know, the, the percentage.
That is correct.
But if staff is saying, hey, we want to go from nine percent straight to thirteen percent, that, you know, that we do focus on a lot of communication and, and so they understand, you know, what, what Coachella is needing and, you know, where we're at in the budget and, you know, the, the revenue that this is going to be bringing and supporting residents. But so, you know, it's, they're going to, they're going to feel it.
Just, so like anyone that's already booked after January first, and you have this whole rollout, so like Airbnb house, the people that are like coming and using it for like the holiday or the property owners, the Airbnb management is going to inform them that their, like their adjustments are going to get changed or?
Yeah, you know, we're working with our attorney to kind of develop like a very well-positioned like notification and there might be a grace period there. Because I did see that some other notifications that were issued for, for other cities that also had a rate increase. They provided like a grace period and then they also, you know, because it, it, it does not affect the short-term vacation rental property owners. It affects the people who stay, right? And so so our, our legal team is just kind of advising that we give them a grace period and whoever was booked before the rate change took effect, that you grandfather their rate or honor, you know, the rate. And so so anyway, those are some of the provisions that BBNK will be bringing forward or consideration.
I'm glad you specified and that was important that the residents are not going to feel this. the residents are not going to feel this, because this is a tax that is paid by visitors. It's like when we go to other cities, we pay a E O T. And so I I like the approach that we honor. If somebody made a reservation for January, you know, and it was nine percent and they paid no sense, you know, I know you can figure out how to do that, but any new reservations coming in January, the effective rate will be.
Yes.
You know, thirteen percent. In terms of how do we communicate with visitors? Do let them understand? I mean, what do other cities do? How do they communicate with visitors and say, hey, the T O T is fifteen percent? I don't know that I've ever been communicated by, like with Anaheim. When I go to Disneyland, I just have to pay, you know, but I'm just, I'm I'm, so what if you can help us think through how we communicate with visitors, what the T O T rate is? And I don't want to do anything that other cities don't do. Thirteen percent?
I don't, I don't think that Carlos, I don't think that we can change the T O T. So, for example, someone runs a an Airbnb. And so that gets locked in between Airbnb, the host, and then the visitor. So we can't once that gets locked in, it gets approved at that rate. So.
Contracted.
Yeah, that's why we're saying.
We grandfathered all those. And administratively, we'd be very difficult. So that's reason two. We're gonna honor all those and just however any new bookings at that point.
Yeah, new bookings come January first. That's the most.
Thank you, Selena.
Yes, thank you.
And then just wanted to recognize your guys' work for item seventeen and eighteen for the RISE grant applications. Those are, those are good applications. Hopefully, we get some federal funding and we'll see.
I hope so.
We'll see. All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's most, it's recommended that items be acted upon simultaneously in a separate action discussion or action is requested by the council. Is there a motion?
I was gonna pull item nineteen and twenty and twenty-three, just have some questions.
Item number?
Nineteen, twenty, and twenty-three. You can take twenty-three first.
Item number twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
You're gonna do nineteen first?
Yeah. We're sitting on nineteen. Okay, that's the one that was pulled, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So last month at our Arts Commission meeting on November twelfth, a motion was passed to approve a sponsorship for cultura, music, and arts art del barrio events. So these events are basically provide a platform for local artists to showcase their work and promotes community engagement. They also have exhibitions, workshops, performances, live music, interactive art for children, and craft vendors. The amount that they're requesting is nine thousand five hundred dollars. It's split evenly for each event, coming out to four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And these are tentatively, would it not scheduled, but they're tentatively tentatively to be scheduled between January and May. And that's pretty much the gist of it.
But there's no like actual, like, I was looking for like the program, like I was intrigued to see what like the program would be or?
Yeah, that wasn't provided. I don't know if it's because they don't have an actual event scheduled already, like a
Yeah.
exact date. So for these upcoming ones, there hasn't been, I don't believe there hasn't been a program actually that's been created that has a breakdown.
Can you just bring that back January eighth? That meeting and then present it into that way they give some time to have it and we can like go over it all completely, if that's fine?
So you would like to continue this?
I would like to continue the item.
All right. Item number nineteen, is there a motion? There's a motion to continue. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion continued. We'll move on now to item number twenty. This is the allocation of funds for the amount of ten for the Coachella Youth Art Program. Hi, Mary.
Good evening, Mayor.
How are you?
Good, good. My name is Mary Rodriguez. I'm a management analyst in the economic development department. So, um, tonight, I'm just gonna provide a brief overview of the staff report and the PowerPoint here for the cultural arts department commission. They met last month and they would like to begin an art, youth art residency program. And so there we go. So it would consist, the art residency program would consist intentional classes led by practicing local artists, skill building, and introduction to new visual art techniques, possibly some installation of student art in city, city, community spaces, or maybe just showcasing their art. That would be really nice. It would include possibly collaborative projects and some nice events that could, you know, showcase all of their art. And this would also have another part into the program, which would be the mural art program. And that would include youth collaboration from concept to completion, project leadership from professional mural artists, skill building, painting, color theory, composition, and design. Maybe it can include some community paint days through connection and through contribution. And the cultural and arts commission is recommending that the city council allocates ten thousand dollars towards this pilot program. And it's going to be hopefully done in two phases. So phase one would possibly include acrylic painting, utility box art, maybe holiday window art, and that's a great way to get the community involved in the youth to showcase their art and to learn more about the city too. Phase two would include the murals, graphic design, photography. And again, these are all great ways to get the community involved and the youth involved in the city. And staff does recommend that the city council authorize and allocate the ten thousand dollars for the establishment of the Coachella Youth Art Program.
So my question is, is this gonna go to the youth commission afterwards? Because we now have a brand new youth commission. Is that where it's gonna?
This is for the cultural arts.
Oh, no, yes. So, yes, we would forward the idea for the commission to review.
Wow. I was also wondering if they should like pioneer this program, like, because they're that we have a youth commission, so I don't know what your thoughts on that.
I don't know that the intention of the youth commission was to be another bureaucratic chain, but
Not, not, not a.
We want to include, like, include them.
Yeah, like include them.
And integrate them into this would be great.
Yeah, like as in like, help with like the planning and using them like, because you have like a lot of this for youth stuff, so not like going through the bureaucratic process and make them prove this, but like
Like engage.
Engage them and, you know, how do they, you know, some of this is the program you have, so how do you do that? But those are my comments on that. Just wanted to bring that up, not the bureaucratic component, like, it's already here, we're gonna throw it back. So more of the, make sure that they're included in the implementation of the program. And how do you bring it to them?
Good suggestion. Good. This is a good thing. I look at some of those utility boxes. And I do see a lot of tagging of like the local artists. And so the fact that we can work with our youth and actually do some creative art and do some cool art, and I think it's a good thing that's gonna go a lot with respect. I do a lot, so good, good work. We'll add that suggestion. Let's, let's take that as a single motion with the suggestion that we integrate the youth advisory council to this. Is there a motion to authorize the allocation of funds for the youth art program with the integration of the youth advisory council? Right?
Motion.
Motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on. I think you said item number twenty-three.
Yes.
Item number twenty-three, this is to authorize the award of a professional service agreement for some tier D guard services, project number oh, eight, two, two, four?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is toward security services. It's been an ongoing service that we provide at the security, security officer is posted Monday through Friday at the library. We also have a security officer that is also posted at the senior center throughout the week. We also have a security officer that aids us in closing the park restrooms nightly. So at ten P M, the officer shift starts, they close all the park restrooms, and then they patrol all city facilities between the hours of ten P M to six A M. And the last component of this contract is that there are several L M D districts that also have funds for evening patrol between the hours of eight, eight P M to through the midnight hours. So it helps provide additional eyes out there. They report streetlights that are out and the evening activity that is inappropriate. Those get reported to us and we forward those as needed.
So the reason I pulled it is because I received some like comments about the bat, so they're supposed to close the bathrooms, right?
Correct.
What time do they close the bathrooms in the?
So it varies at which location, but it starts at ten.
Okay, so when people are like, because I've gotten some comments that they close them like at eight o'clock in the afternoon.
This shift starts at ten. We we have had different circumstances. I don't know if it's at Veterans Park. At Veterans Park, we have had some challenges that sometimes we close it earlier. And we have had similar situations. If it pertains to homelessness activity at the park, we will sometimes close them earlier to deter that activity temporarily, and then we reopen. And we have them at the regular hours of the park.
Yeah, this one's in Bagduma, so.
I'll check on that.
Yeah, just want to make sure, because, you know, they've got the kids playing soccer and then you gotta go cross and.
Yes, definitely. We'll double check with them on that.
Make sure, because it ties into the pieces. I want to make sure who's who's the one closing them? If it's a security guard.
It is a security guard, and it is, that shift starts at ten. So they should not be closed earlier than ten if there is any such report. If, please forward them my way, we will correct it.
With the exception, sorry, with the exception of the Veterans Park, you said, that one closes?
No, all of them close at ten. The exception is that if we have homeless activity, which we've had, not recently, but in the past, we've had more homeless activity at Veterans Park. So there have been a lot of instances where we have closed those park restrooms for extended periods of time to deter that activity in the restrooms.
So when the homeless are doing drugs and they're in other.
When it's been recurring and it has been a challenge for us to obtain control of that area, then we have closed them down.
Off topic, really, for something, you know, that should be coming back, but for the maintenance, Maritza, of the restrooms, I'm just making sure there's, you know, toy paper and they're cleaned.
We are on that. I have not received any complaints of that overall. We are servicing all restrooms twice daily. So we do a morning shift. It basically is a full day for one staffer. So they clean all restrooms, which we have about thirteen, starting at in the morning. So six A M. They report in by the time they're probably mobilized, it's closer to six thirty, then they do all the restrooms, usually lunch, and they do all the restrooms again.
I see our staff out there in the morning when I'm walking. And we have thirteen, are we gonna do, it's gonna go up to fifteen now with the two new ones?
Well, one is a replacement, but we'll have one more. Yes.
Four, so that'll be thirteen, fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Yeah, they're always out there. They're always pressure washing, taking down the graffiti. Yeah, yeah.
Anatizing, restocking. We do sometimes have some challenges, like, for example, this weekend, we will be partnering at Bagduma Park with ACES program. So they are using all of the baseball fields. In those circumstances where we have like such an influx of users at the same time, we will sometimes have, but we have correspondence with the ACES coordinator and they report any challenges that they're having at the bathrooms and we respond.
And and I bring it up because I have had a lot of concerns and so just relaying that message.
Okay, I'll work with staff. I I thought overall, there they had been cleaned, so I had not received any real concerns. They do get plugged up. Those are, those are more user, honestly, challenges, because people they insert things into the toilets that should not be flush, essentially. Urinals, toilets, all those challenges, so.
Maritza, did we get the lights fixed at Bagduma?
At the restroom?
No, at the fields.
Uh, yes, so the challenge that we, the reason for, I had more than one reporter of this. Thank you, Councilwoman, for reporting it. The lights at Bagduma were flashing the other night, and that is a result of we had a power surge from I I D a couple months back. So we've ordered the replacement part, that is the communicator to the baseball field lighting. So that it part is on order, but we have not received it. So at this point, we will be turning them on manually and turning them off manually to prevent that.
Okay, thank you. Correct. So also the security guard that we have at the library. So at one point, our CLS were providing security. And then, and then once they seen that we were providing security and they released their security. And so it's now just us managing and covering that security. The contract that we have with our CLS is that I think it's a responsibility to be providing security at the library.
So they provide, what they did provide previously is they provided security inside the the area of the library. The challenge that we experience is the lobby area. So that's why we've added personnel to ensure that that area is a is a good experience for those that go through there. We also obviously provide the restroom facility that augments the services to Sixth Street Coffee, and that area is open at different hours than the library. So that's the reason we've initially augmented this.
No, and and I remember.
And the conference rooms.
It was a discussion that I brought up. So I I know at that time, too, we had a, we had a lot of challenges with the homeless residents, and that's where the security was brought in for, especially because they were kind of hanging out in the restrooms and obviously, you have a lot of families.
And we really haven't had an issue with those concerns in the county's operated section of the library. The challenge has been in the lobby area, and we do have a lot of users, as you guys are all aware of, the conference rooms. So as those rented out, we want to make sure we're providing a good environment for that use.
So and and I have seen, obviously, we just don't, we don't have the the challenge anymore. The security presence has really made an impact.
It has.
Um, I guess what I'm getting to is, and if you guys can look this up, is on the R C L S contract. And so I know that obviously we pay a certain amount. And what we pay, does that include security, is what I'm getting to?
We do not get billed by R C L S for the services they provide.
So that's something that they provide on their own.
Correct. The county services that are provided through the library across the street are not something that is billed to us. The city has in in a few years past, augmented services that is primarily going to the recirculation updates and things of that nature by twenty-five thousand, but we are not paying a monthly, a monthly or an annual bill for R C L S.
And then so our CLS does provide security at every other city. They do.
Okay.
And so, yeah, I would.
Work with them on bringing that back.
I don't want them to put the responsibility just in the city if they're providing security to every other city and and they're covering it. And that that's part of the collaboration and partnership between us and R C L S. Is that then they should be providing our library, regardless if we have a security outside monitoring what's managed by the city. Is that if we can be provided just the same type of services?
Of course. Welcome. Any other questions?
Well, that was good. Well, we're back on the consent calendar.
I'm gonna, sorry, I'm gonna pull item twenty-five.
Item number twenty-five, this is the professional service agreement K M A for hotel feasibility study.
Selena.
It's a meeting.
Hotel feasibility study, item number twenty-five.
Sorry, I have, good evening, I have an outdated agenda, so I apologize. I didn't realize the hotel feasibility study was on the, on the calendar. But yes, so so the city of Coachella is hoping to enlist the professional services of this organ, of this company, because we would like to conduct a formal study of where in the city could we possibly have a hotel? What, you know, so they're gonna look at just all the market information to really place it where where it's best suited. Because staff has identified some possible, you know, hotel locations along like kind of abiding the ten freeway and just other other wonderful places like where we think we might have, and places like that. However, we really wanted to kind of formalize that, ju- just what what our thoughts have been. And so this company is going to be providing those services. They're gonna be studying our area and just really providing some really good information about where it would be best to place a hotel or hotels in our city. And so the process will take about, they, I I guess they did do this service for the city of Indio, and it took them about six months. So they told us it could be anywhere between three to six months that they're gonna take, take to conduct all the studies and what have you. And then we'll, we'll bring the item back to, you know, our Economic Development Subcommittee and also the city council for review. And so I do know that they are gonna charge. they uh are gonna charge us, I believe, uh, Dr. Martin, is it sixty thousand or?
Seventy-nine thousand five hundred.
Yeah, so uh, so we think it's a very reasonable rate, so hopefully um the council is in agreement because we have had uh extensive meetings with them at, with the visitor greater Palm Springs uh staff and also uh them. And we, we believe that this is the way to go. It is something that I requested when I first became director of economic development, it, you know, to kind of study like where in the city does it make most sense. Uh, because I also want to take the results and bring them to I C S E in Las Vegas and I really want to present that to our hoteliers. Uh, cause I didn't really have that information in years past and I think this is gonna be really helpful if we can possibly get it by the time I C S E uh comes around. And so I want to bring that study to show our hoteliers there. Hey, here it is. Here are some sites. And so it'll be a more informed uh process.
Thank you, Selena. The reason I'm asking is because like for the phasing, we don't have the months or any of that additional information. And um, I agree with you, we do need a hotel feasibility study, especially since we just approved the, the increase of the T O T. I would like to provide more, more input if we could do that. Um, and then can we hear from K M A as well?
Absolutely.
What they're targeting. Um, before we approve it, I would like to just be able to provide more input and um become a little bit more familiar with the process because um the, the sheets that are on here doesn't provide that info.
Okay, I can, I can ask them to come.
Continue.
Yes, mode, continue.
There's a motion. There's, is there a second?
Second.
You're seconding a motion to continue this item, item number twenty-five. If you can support more information, all those in favor, sign above by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. Aye.
Uh, it is recommended that the consent items be acted upon simultaneously unless, unless any separate action is requested. Uh, can we get a motion to approve the remaining consent item, item calendars? Is there a motion?
Motion, and then you said you were gonna number one, right?
I will be abstaining from item number thirteen. Is there a motion? Is there, is there a second? Looks like there's no second.
I'll second.
There's a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, no absten- there is one abstention for me on item number thirteen. Move on now to uh item number twenty-six. This is to authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract for construction and the amount of one point two million. Uh, this is for the Headworks Green System Improvement Projects. The water project director, Strahd.
Yes, uh, good evening, mayor, members of the council. Congratulations to all of you for your elections and uh one more year of service. And uh with that, I, I do have the next three items, so um I want to note uh that they're all tied to ARPA funding, so I will be kind of uh tying all three items together as we go through each of the individual items, so hopefully you keep that in mind so you could track uh some of the movement of, of these projects in, in relation to ARPA. So, um I wanted to start off with some, some previous council action, just to give you a sense of how we landed here. So uh, when council uh was deciding how to split the ARPA funding, uh, you did the, take action uh to set aside uh the two point two million uh for infrastructure projects related to water and sewer. Um, since then, um, we had identified the two uh highest ranking uh sewer projects that, that we had in our C I P. Uh, one of those was the Headworks Project, which is the, the project that we're gonna go over right now. And then the other one was a, the upsizing of a, of a sewer main. And so since then, uh, we've been uh working to get both of these projects shovel ready. And um, one of, one of the actions today is authorize the construction of this project. And uh, wanted to also show you that some of the past, the action has been these resolutions that set aside the funding, eight hundred thousand for the Headworks and the one point four for the Tyler Street Capacity Improvement Project. I just want to give you a quick, uh, quick uh background on why the project is necessary. So we have a, a treatment plant and uh we had an expansion back in two thousand and seven. This was a, a huge expansion. And uh maybe about twenty-three million dollars. And when we built uh the, the Headworks, we actually uh built the Headworks for it to have two bar screens. And this is pretty typical of treatment systems. You, you want redundancy. And so it was, it was slotted for two bar screens, but for whatever reason, they only put in one bar screen. And so that's, that's very uncommon. Um, we, we've had issues before when one of the bar screen goes down. Uh, it creates flow issues for us and, and kind of reduces our ability to, to treat the, 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 the water that's coming in. And so the, this is a high ranking project for us. And so we, we want to put in the second bar screen. And so you've already authorized the design of this. And so uh we went out to, to bid. Uh, we received the bid from Core Construction. And then this just gives you a sense of where that second bar screen would go. So you, you could see that there's a bar screen uh to the left. And then I kind of put a, a, a red circle around the slot that would take the second bar screen. And so this was built this way. But the, the, the piece, the piece of equipment was never installed, so we're trying to install it. And so that uh, that's our recommendations to award this contract for, for the installation of this bar screen.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the redundancy of the bar stream screens?
Motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lutia?
Aye.
Councilmember Ethan?
Aye.
Mayor Potenboh?
Yes.
Mayor Adams?
Aye. Move on to item number twenty-seven. This is to adopt resolution two thousand and twenty-four sixty-six, approving the American ARPA money for the state and local fiscal recovery fund. The C S A for program, the Coachella sanitary district, headwork screening improvements, more redundancy.
So you could see here that I brought a resolution uh where, where we um set aside the eight hundred thousand for the headwork screening project. The other project, the Tyler Street Capacity Improvement Project came in lower, about two hundred and ninety thousand lower. So this, this new resolution is, is uh to update the old resolution, the twenty twenty-four thirty-one, to move those two hundred and ninety thousand into the eight hundred thousand. So the resolution looks identical. The only difference is that instead of saying eight hundred thousand, it has the new amount that is shown on your item. But it, but it's still within the two point two that you had already authorized to be spent on projects. Okay?
Is there a motion to approve this item?
Motion.
It's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Just a second. There's a motion and a second. We get a roll call?
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Viera?
Aye.
Councilmember Lita?
Aye.
Mayor Potenboh?
Yes.
Mayor Adams?
Aye. Move on to item number twenty-eight. This is to authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract with the Van Dyck Corporation to the amount of one point one million for the Tyler Street Sewer Improvements. Mr. Strahd.
Yeah, the same, the same, the starting slide. Again, we have two point one million. We separated the projects. You just, you're seeing right now that the, that the bid came in lower at the one point one, so we didn't need the one point four, so we're moving the remainder into uh the eight hundred, cause we still need the funding because that project came in higher. Um, so that's the same slide. Uh, and a little bit of background on why this project is necessary. We, we have a sewer uh master plan. And we have a hydraulic model that um allows us to see where our deficient pipes are located. These, these are pipes that uh have to convey flow, wastewater flows and, and uh they get full. And as they get full, you have to upsize the pipe. So there's uh one, one piece of pipe that in particular is uh, is of high priority and that's this section here. It's an eight inch pipe. And per our master plan, which kind of shows us how the city's gonna grow and how the flows are gonna uh in- increase over, 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 over time. Uh, it, it recommends that we uh upsize that pipe to a fifteen inch, so that pro- this is what this project is gonna do. So again, you've already um authorized the design of this project. We've designed it. We, well, have it shovel ready. We went out to bid. And we received uh these six bids. Um, these bids were open publicly and uh the lowest responsive bidder is the Van Dyck Corporation. Their bid came in at that one point one uh million dollars that you see there. And this is just to show you um a section of our system. And uh, this is, this is from my heart, from our hydraulic model. And it shows you um that the pipe on Tyler, that eight inch pipe is efficient in red. So we're gonna turn that red pipe into a green pipe and, and allow for more capacity as development happens upstream and then they send that flow down. That pipe will be designed to, to not only uh fix the deficiency, but also add more capacity as, as you have more development upstream. So um, we have this uh model that maps our entire system and we use that model to uh come up with our C I P then that's just know what, what pipes we need to upsize.
That's law and I, I think this is a great thing and I know it'll assist that whole area as the area develops. Uh, that's an area that's also prone to a lot of flooding when the rains came and that whole area just I think Councilmember Viera and I went through there and it was like three, four feet of water. And then one of our staff got electrocuted right there too.
That's right, yeah.
But this added capacity, can it assist in any, it's not supposed to, but does it?
No, no, that's, that's so, so there are um, there are standards. So for example, um, uh, pipes that are, that are um that are eight inches, um, they shouldn't be more than fifty percent full to allow for that intrusion during rain events. So your pipe shouldn't be full under normal conditions because if it rains, then there's no room for it for that rain to go, so it'll fill up the pipe and it'll come out of the manhole.
And backflow.
It'll come out of the manhole. So, so that's the standard that we use is when we see these pipes reaching a certain uh capacity, then it, it's a trigger for us to upsize because we always want to have that extra room. So yeah, so this upsizing this um will, will allow for the intrusion of, of rainwater when it, when it rains. And we do have a big problem um along uh Harrison, Caesar Chavez, and those are pipes that eventually when the water goes into those manholes, it eventually comes to this eight inch. And that's, and that's where it gets uh choked. It kind of gets restricted there.
Uh huh.
So that's why it's a, it's our high priority project, cause the water will come out of those manholes.
Okay, now, and I think that's great. Now in terms of when you reconstruct the road, i- is, is it gonna be a full reconstruction?
Yeah, it's uh, it's incorporated into, it's in, we work with engineering to ensure that the road uh is put back um almost in the same manner that the county would condition us to put back their road, so um, may, you know, full width, full, full uh width of a lane or up to center line.
Alright.
So yes.
Okay, very good.
Castelo, forgive me if um, if I missed it. So we look at the deficient eight pipes on Tyler Street.
Mm-hmm.
And then the red portion uh on Avenue fifty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Does that address that?
No, uh, that's another project that, that we would, that we would have to also tackle. Uh, I actually um this is actually from an analysis that we did for uh the Bayissima development there. Um, and so what we were doing for Bayissima was letting them know that i- if, when they develop and they, I think they're proposing several hundred homes. When they send that flow to the Avenue fifty-four, one of their conditions is gonna be that they need to upsize that pipe. Because if they send their flow there, the, the pipe can't carry it. So that's typical of setting conditions for developers. You run these models and then it lets you uh let them know what, what they need to improve in order for their development to work.
Good, thank you for addressing.
Didn't Beissima develop?
Number two.
Didn't Beissima, Do Beissima develop?
Uh, the one uh, they're calling it Bayissima two, but it, I think the original.
The new proposed, the least amount of the.
It's a new proposed B, B.
Yeah, the Bianco properties.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. It, it's, it's in the, it's in the preliminaries.
They did phase one and phase two already.
Mm-hmm, it's, it's on the opposite. It's, it's on top of the, the development. There was never finished.
One of the many housing projects that might come on line two.
Okay.
If there's power.
Great.
Thank you, Castelo.
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
There's a motion. Is there a second? I'll second. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Viera?
Aye.
Councilmember Ethan?
Aye.
Mayor Potenboh?
Yes.
Mayor Adams?
Aye.
Thank you.
Move on now to item number twenty-nine. This is to authorize the city of Coachella uh to sponsor the Palm Springs International Film Festival.
Good evening, council. Selena Jimenez, Director of Economic Development. Uh, so the item that we have before you uh is consideration of sponsorship uh support for the annual, the thirty-sixth annual Palm Springs International Film Festival, which will take place uh January second through the thirteenth of twenty twenty-five. And I do have Ms. Kelly here this evening, who will uh be happy to answer any questions about this request. Uh, let me go ahead and present to you what um they're looking to offer the city of Coachella. Uh, so the film festival, as ma- many of you may know, uh was launched in nineteen ninety and uh it's a premier presenter of world cinema located in the beautiful Coachella Valley, as we all know, in the city of Palm Springs. And so the festival is scheduled to be held physically from January second through the thirteenth of twenty twenty-five. And the um, the annual star-studded film awards honoring the best and brightest performances of the year is scheduled for January third, twenty twenty-five. And so the Palm Springs International Film Festival is actually organized by the Palm Springs International uh Film Society, which is a five oh one C three charitable nonprofit organization uh dedicated to cultivating and promoting the art of science of film, of, the art and science of film through education and cross-cultural awareness. And so this year, uh, the, the P S I F F is proposing to offer the city the following benefits uh that will come as a result of their sponsor, sponsorship requests. And then just to announce their sponsorship request is in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. And so uh they will be having a promotional and marketing activities that will feature the city of Coachella. And we will be entitled to all the benefits that are commensurate with our level of support. And so we, they, they will offer onsite promotion. The city of Coachella's logo will be placed at the screening venues. And other guest-facing areas size commensurate with the sponsorship level. We will also have local print advertising, so they will be partnering with local and regional outlets to bring the festival to the community. And this sponsorship will give the company or the city a brand recognition through partnership and association with the Palm Springs International Film Society. There will be program book advertising. The city's logo will be in full color, uh grouped and sized uh in the, in the program book. Uh, the city will also receive one half-page color ad in the souvenir program book. Uh, there's gonna be a festival pre-screening trailer and so the city of Coachella's logo will be placed there. On, and also there's gonna be on-screen advertising. Uh, so the city will receive digital advertising um in, in the sponsor reel that runs continuously between every film at all venues during the festival. Uh, and this is truly an opportunity to reach every audience member with our unique brand messaging. And additional benefits include um student screening day on-screen advertising. The digital advertising image of the city of Coachella's choice will be included here. Uh, the, our logo will be placed on sponsor pages in the festival guide. Uh, our logo will also be placed on signage at each screening venue and other guest-facing areas uh such as the ticket and information center grouped and sized with their sponsorship level. Um, our, our logo will also be featured on their website uh at p s film fest dot org and a hyperlink to the city of Coachella's designated U R L will also be provided to them so that it could be um linked back. And there are um three businesses selected by the city of Coachella will be listed on their website. Uh, where to eat, play, stay web pay, webpage. And so the business will be listed under the business category with the business logo and a U R L link back to their choice uh back to their business, excuse me. In addition to the benefits mentioned here, we are also going to feature movies in the park here at Veterans Park. Uh, this free event will be held in the city of Coachella showcasing a Latino filmmaker. Uh, and the date will be to be determined. However, a date to align with Hispanic Heritage Month is recommended. Uh, the event itself uh will be planned in conjunction with the Palm Springs International Film Festival events and artistic planning department to create a truly unique uh event that is different from anything else that they've offered or done with the city partner in the Coachella Valley. to create a truly unique event that is different from anything else that they've offered or done with the city partner in the Coachella Valley. Additional entitlements include, so basically the city will get six sponsor screening passes. Opening night screening and reception, six tickets to that, six tickets to the closing night screening and reception. Six tickets to filmmaker parties, twenty vouchers for film screens. Film screening vouchers that can be redeemed for any regular film screening, once the box office opens through the festival. Those can also be used as giveaways and also one hundred vouchers for our senior citizens. We will also get one dedicated social media post, content will be provided by the city of Coachella. Specifically, our public information officer. And additional film awards benefits include one VIP platinum table for six people with associate, associated benefits per film awards department. And it will include a Parker after-party access for all table guests. In addition, we will also receive two transferable passes that can be used in the talent section at the after-party. The city will also receive on-screen recognition, our logo will be placed there. Only premier level sponsors and up are recognized at the film awards. Going back to the student screening day, this will be held at Coachella Valley High School. The date is still being locked in with the school, but it will be between January sixth and the twelfth. C V High School would be the host school and Palm Springs International Film Festival would bus students in from other schools. And so the, the film festival organizers are requesting to have a welcome from the mayor or council at these events. So I just wanna have you guys mark your calendars if you can. The film festival provides box lunches for all the students and the bussing. Media will be onsite and the rights to photos taken at the event for the city to use. They will also feature a filmmaker in the classroom. This was held at Coachella Valley High School this year in April and so passes to the short fest were given to all the students that participated. And so the filmmaker, filmmaker in the classroom project will be returning in the spring of twenty twenty-five. And should the council approve their request, you know, we will then execute a sponsor sponsorship agreement in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. And then we will provide all the marketing and advertising collateral that they might need in order to feature us in, in, in the benefits that I just went over. And that concludes our presentation. As I said, we do have Kelly here to answer any questions that council might have.
Any questions, council?
The one hundred senior citizen tickets then would be bus them or to be during like the ability, but I know that the hours range and you know, I haven't seen what the final schedule for the films are, so.
That's a good point. Actually, I did not bring on the desert guide, the seventy-five page desert guide that already had your logo in it. So I should mention that, thanks, Dr. Martin. But in there, it has the guide of, we have a location in Makita this year and then Cathedral City. And then we have five of their locations in Palm Springs. So the goal is to really coordinate on you, the senior center would have a concierge service that is dedicated to them so that it kinda can get complicated when you're going online. So they can make all their reservations through the phone to make it as simple as possible. We were also trying to create seating that would maybe just anticipating potential wheelchair access or walkers. And so we would reserve seating upfront for them in advance, which we typically don't do for individual tickets. That's typically for like pass holders, such as the sponsorship passes that you have. And so that's for the festival portion. With the bussing, yes, so we have ability to be able for transportation and so that's all gonna be done through our concierge services. To help be able to, so we do working with the senior center to try to get you know, a good group at a time, so it's not one-off, like individuals, but we'd be happy to, you know, it's for the seniors. To get them to the movie.
And I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea if we wanna bus them. Well, I don't know bus anymore. We, we have a van.
We have vans, so our, one of our wonderful sponsors, where's the camera, right? Just a auto, no, they provide us with vans to be able to transport. And we do have a van that is wheelchair accessible, so that we can be able to, that has a power lift.
Oh, the seniors have a signup sheet, by the way. So this will go on the signup sheet and they, the more people that go, the more others wanna go, so this is a large group.
Well, I hope that we'll be able to, to, as I explained to your city manager. This is what we think of more as a partnership for all of twenty twenty-five. So this is just the base of what we want to start in providing the city. And then we wanna continue to do more. So as opportunities arise throughout the year, sometimes films come up. I'll give you a prime example, Bradley Cooper just did a film about aging and Alzheimer's. And he wants to feature the film out here because of the connection with the Alzheimer's Association that helped him. And so he wants to feature it, but that will be done in March or maybe in May, right? And so that's where we want to maybe bring it to the senior center to do a screening. And so we bring the talent and we bring, so it's, i- if we can already have that, a, a partnership set. It just makes it easier for us to be able to launch something. It's just twenty-nine poems has just become a partner of ours. And so for us to be able to get a film that is for, that is marine-based or military-based or service, you know, that we can just jump in the opportunity. Sometimes those things just fall in our lap and we have to execute it pretty fast. So when we already have those relationships, which has been great so far, so.
So just really quickly, is it forty-five thousand or twenty thousand? That's the ask.
Twenty thousand.
So in your staff report under fiscal impact, it says forty-five thousand?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And on the screen up here too, it also says forty-five thousand.
Oh, I apologize. No, it's of any amount of twenty thousand, cuz I think are at the back, sorry. So it's for any amount of twenty thousand? Yeah, cuz we had spoken with them about.
Initially, it was at forty-five thousand. And so what we did was we kind of pulled some things off the table, but we also looked at what are your needs? Every community, every city is different. And so whether it's your demographic or the, the community that you serve specifically, what's important to you? The senior center, and that was through our conversations, so we realized that was important, so we redirected and it just happened to be less expensive to be able to offer some of these services, so it doesn't cost as much. But what we hope is that we can start doing more in the future. And maybe in the twenty twenty-six year, we can be more close to the forty-five thousand dollar support range and provide, and, and what we want to do, and that's why we want you to come so badly to the film awards and the film festival. So you all see it firsthand, so you can see the economic powerhouse that we are. We bring a hundred fifty thousand people to the city of Palm Springs alone. We're doing an economic impact study this year, so, and we're going to specifically see how it impacts the city of Coachella. So we'll be able to come back with actual figures and data, as I heard you were talking about earlier. I love a good report about really showing how our footprints are impact and what we do for your businesses. And that's why we try to include some of that as well.
I, I thank you for tailoring an approach to us. I, I'm excited for the fact that you will bring a video or some screening here. I think when, you know, folks think about the Palm Springs Film Festival here in Coachella, it's, it's, it's they don't really have access to it, they've never been there. And so the fact that you guys are deploying a new model where you're setting up viewing areas in different cities. I think it's a good thing, obviously.
Chairman, Mr. Shandi is very active in this community and he sees that it's a very long drive, Palm Springs. So it's about becoming more, so I, I thank you for, I wanna make sure that our, our board knows that you recognize that.
Yeah, I think that's important and I think, I think that, you know, there was a time where this community was really moving on film screenings and there's a lot of movement. And there's a lot of, it, it did a lot to inspire people and kids in particular to wanna go into movie production and acting and like backlot setups and understanding what it is to make a film. So I think if we can inspire, you know, some of our students and some of our kids into this industry is, I think it's a good thing. And so, eh, this is a beginning. But I wanna thank you guys for tailoring our needs with yours and, and working with us. So with that, I'll move approval. There are no other questions.
One second.
There's a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember V O?
Yes.
Councilmember Rechan?
Aye.
Mayor Potenio?
Yes.
Mayor Hales.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you, city councilors.
We'll move on now to approval of the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five city council meeting calendar. City manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We had them for you to approve the twenty twenty-five calendar for council meetings. We understand that throughout the year, there's events, conferences that council attends to, to bring back new information and direct staff policies that would help better the lives of new members. And we've identified some of that for you today and wanted to get your approval of, of the calendar. So for twenty twenty-five, we plan to cancel the January tenth meeting cuz of the New Year holiday. We come back for vacation on January sixth. I can't get an agenda out by January tenth. We, we won't be, meet the, the Brown Act. Just April twenty-fifth, we historically have to take that off for spring break. Give staff an opportunity and council, an opportunity to enjoy spring break with their, 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 their kids. The other ones, in May, we usually go to the I C S conference in Las Vegas and that's the International Shopping Centers conference that where we go out there to recruit for retailers, developers, bringing in jobs and more economic development to the city. We've, we've had a great success having our council there and building those relationships and networks. Now, Leo is a, a annual conference that's held in different cities annually that a lot of council members attend to to get new ideas on policies, projects and programs and bring it forward to the city. Historically, we go dark in August, like all cities do in the Coachella Valley or California. And in the Bay Conference that we go to is the League of Cities Annual Conference, which all the cities in California go to. And this year will be in November, October eighth in Long Beach and then obviously the, we cancel the meeting in November and December due to the holidays, so staff recommends adopting this calendar, so the residents know what meetings we'll, we'll have and we won't have. Based on that, do we have any, I open up to any comments, questions or suggestions?
So I asked to bring back the other item on the eighth, so I really don't have it, cuz I, I don't want to wait till like the twenty-second, that's why. So that's why I wanna have that meeting on the eighth for that item that I tabled to the I tabled an item for the January eighth meeting, so.
Okay, so yeah, but our next meeting will be.
Because meetings on the tenth, i- if you look at the calendar, if January twenty twenty-five.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, the eighth, I'm sorry, yeah, we can't, so the first meeting in January is gonna be canceled. We have our first meeting on January twenty-second. Cuz we come back from vacation on January sixth, so I can't pull up an agenda in two days.
How long do we need to report before we put us?
It's seventy-two hours, right?
For a regular meeting, seventy-two hours.
Gabriel, for some of these conferences, I think it's, I think it's for me, it's jumping too soon, assuming that everybody or at least three members of council are going. I didn't attend the League of, of California Cities this year. You know, but I, I think it makes more sense that once Delia gets an account of who's attending. And then if there's then the majority that we counsel based on that and not before she gets who's attending. And there's many cities that are actually limited when it comes to conferences for this reason. That, you know, we, they don't wanna not, or council, city council meeting. So a lot of cities only kind of, they limit who can attend these conferences for that reason. And while I know that many elected want to attend these conferences, I do feel a bit uncomfortable. It's canceling these days without knowing who's attending.
Also, the May twenty-first, that's not a council meeting night. The week, it's cuz May lands weird this year. May first starts on Thursday, so then the first the second, so the fourteenth and the eighteenth, the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth are the council meetings. So then we don't need to cancel the I C S C one, cuz we won't even have a meeting that week, cuz it'll be the week after.
There's no, yeah, we don't, if there's no action here, then we can proceed as normal.
So I wanna remove the, the dates, the cancellations for the conferences. And then as we, as once Delia gets a, a head count of who's attending, then that meeting can be canceled that way, but not before.
Yeah, that makes sense. That's a good catch.
Mr. Figueroa, the second and the twenty-eight, yeah. There's no need to, cuz it's, yeah. All right, well.
Thank you.
You will be, we, we having council meetings unless otherwise notified. That happened last year too, by the way, but it didn't, it happened where this wa- water policy committee where councilmember Dago, uh, uh, councilmember Figueroa, councilmember Rechan. They said, hey, we wanna have the meeting and then
We weren't here.
And then they all weren't here until we canceled. So that'll happen again more than likely, cuz I'm sure that the council majority is gonna wanna go to these, these conferences, but it is what it is and we'll deal with it as it comes. It's fine.
Gabriel, for the spring break week. That's assuming, so usually school districts, they have a different week for spring break.
We looked up the, the, the Coachella Valley High School District and I think it's that week, so.
The Coachella Valley.
Yeah.
But that's assuming that a- all the execs and, and employees
Right.
are, that their children are attending.
I, I think Desert Sands had the same, I think they had the same week as well. They, usually the school districts in the region have the same.
And so do we have that many executive team members out that we would have to cancel?
We would have to cancel, but you display a super late agenda. Things that probably could be postponed for another meeting, but we could definitely have that meeting.
I'm, I'm okay that, I, you know, I, I've, I've have, you know, mentioned a few times where I am a, a bit uncomfortable with how many cancellations we have because as council members, that's one of our biggest responsibilities to attend these meetings. And I take that role very seriously and that responsibility. And so if some of these cannot be canceled, that's, it's better. So we remove the conferences, which is great. I feel much more comfortable, at least for getting a head count before. But for spring break, that's assuming that every executive director is gonna be out on vacation that week. And so even if we had this two executive directors here, I mean, it would be a light meeting, but there's no reason.
So no spring break for staff?
What did we do this year?
We canceled it.
We, we canceled?
So is there, so what I'm hearing from the mayor pro temp is that no, well, we're gonna meet during conferences and we're gonna meet during spring break. And so staff don't plan, don't have spring break, don't, well, we're gonna be. So that's what I'm understanding.
No, so I, I would just circle back to it, so in no way is this saying, hey, staff, do not have spring break. That's not what we're saying at all. That's just assuming that every executive team member is gonna be out. And I've been here during that time and not everybody has young kiddos. And so, you know, it, it's not that all executive team members are gonna be out. So in no way am I saying we're discouraging any executive team member or any employee from taking that time off and spending it with their kids. Not at all am I implying that. I'm just saying that it's highly unlikely that every executive team member is gonna be out that week. I mean, my, my kettle is grown, so for me, there's no such thing, you know? So on spring break, other than I have it off, but you know, it doesn't apply to everyone.
So do we bring it, so did you wanna bring it back or how do you wanna move forward? What do you think could be a possible resolution? Do we bring this item back? Do we take a, like a tally? Do we vote? What, what is that you think would benefit us for today to be able to move forward?
So I'm suggesting that we remove spring break and the conferences.
Bring the calendar back up. So the suggestion is meeting on the twenty eighth. Meeting on the twenty third. Meeting on the twenty fifth. And uh. Yeah, that's what I'm understanding. Is that the, is that the?
Is that accurate?
Yes, I said the conferences and spring break.
Is the next one I am so.
Yeah, no, well, she, it sounds like, is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council member, council member Perez.
Aye.
Council member.
Aye.
Council member Beahan.
No.
Mayor Poten Delgado.
Yes.
Mayor Nellis.
No.
We will, I will be recusing myself from item number thirty one. This is Coachella Healthy Food Truck Permit Program. As I own real property in one of the potential zones, so I'll step off and give this to the mayor pro temp.
Thank you, Gabriel. Um go ahead and give us the presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Delgado and members of the city council. Gabriel Perez, your Development Service Director. So this item is the Coachella Healthy Food Truck Permanent Pilot Program. Uh currently, the city does not allow food trucks in our ordinance, and uh. This is before you because it's something that has been in our general plan. So some background to this. In two thousand twenty four, the city council adopted ordinance to establish sidewalk vendor uh regulations. Uh previously, we didn't have any. There was a proliferation of sidewalk uh vendors. Um since adopting that ordinance, um we do have a program that allows for sidewalk vending in the city. In certain areas with certain regulations. Um since we adopted it, a lot of the sidewalk vendors do have challenges in trying to obtain. County health permits. Um it essentially almost requires you to have like a a mobile food truck. To be able to operate, um but we don't have a food truck permit in the city. So we want to uh establish a program that would create that path uh for vendors, um which would. Be a path to maybe even a brick and mortar business in the future would promote health um as a way to enhance our downtown Coachella. Uh as a destination and to create a culinary experience and some of our date farms. Uh we did have a study session on this with our planning commission on the sixth, and they recommended approval to the city council on the twentieth. Uh since we adopted the ordinance, there's been a few other things that uh uh we recommended to council, which was to support. Other private initiatives that we're trying to support sidewalk vendors. And uh one example is the Coachella Entertainment Park versus the city um trying to do our own food truck um. Uh program um on operating that on our own. So in our general plan, this is the language um in our general plan. And it does call for uh what's called plaza vendors, create a simple healthy food truck permit program. That allows food and beverage vendors to operate in and around perimeter of parks. Uh plazas, so long as they meet certain nutritional requirements determined by the city. So we saw this, and we're trying to figure out, well, how do we establish that program? Uh I'm not a nutritionist, and so how do we create a healthy menu? So we did reach out to the the county health department. Um they've been very helpful with this program, the Riverside uh University Health System. And so they had some recommendations. Um they also recommended that we connect with the Blue Zones program that uh happy to announce that we do have. Uh a a group from the Blue Zones Initiative that are here with us today. And uh it was recommended that uh that we adopt something that would include Blue Zone food guidelines. And a Blue Zones Restaurant Pledge. So with the idea that that menu would meet uh twenty five percent of the menu would would meet those. Guidelines. Now that menu would be emphasis on uh nutritional. Uh guidelines such as eating seasonal fruits and vegetables, whole grains, beans and nuts. Using plant-based oils, reducing sugar and dairy, and increasing plant-based options. Uh also including guidelines, recommendations to optimize food environment and eating experience and promoting health options. Uh so what would that look like? Here are some examples of what would be part of the the guidelines. And so some examples are offer plant-based foods. Um to provide half s- uh size portions of top-selling entries. Um other Blue Zones project compliance would be source, source at least three fruits, vegetables from local farms. Um prohibiting smoking your food trucks uh and train staff quarterly on health, healthy food initiatives. So here would be the definition in the ordinance for uh a mobile food truck. So it'd mean a licensed motorized vehicle. Including any legally attached trailer used in conjunction with the service of a commissary. And other permanent food facility upon which prepackaged or approved non-prepackaged food is sold, offered for sale, and otherwise distributed as. As retail. And then we did find a healthy food truck uh permit. Uh or healthy food truck as a menu where twenty five percent of the food and beverages uh meet the Blue Zone guidelines. So what would be the eligible areas? So in one ordinance that are, that's before you today. Um one would be the menu that it meets the the healthy, healthy uh guidelines for the Blue Zones. Um and then it would establish two locations where they could locate. Uh so one would be in the downtown zone. Uh specifically in downtown transition and downtown Pueblo Viejo zone, um surrounding the Veterans Memorial Park. And then the other would be in certain parks in the city. And I'll go into that in a bit. Uh so just some pictures of how food trucks look in in other cities and other experiences. Obviously, the opportunity to create an experience with uh C V and lighting. Um and uh, yeah, our intern that just left was uh made some images for us about what this could look like. If it wasn't a downtown transition, transition zone. So we do have a lot of housing that surrounds the the Veterans Park. And so there are examples where you have food trucks that would be in a front yard. The one on the right. Was uh taken from what we did a visit to Barrio Logan in San Diego.
So so like, we'll go back to that picture. So like, like say, uh um. A community like someone could have, if they have the space for it, they could park the up there. Okay.
Yeah, so they could park it there. Um so they applied for the permit, and they would be responsible for creating that. Um dining experience.
So I'm talking like um. Thinking like right here, um the rural legal and that building right next to it, if it was big enough, the blue building, the older building right there. Right here, just across the street, K corner. There's like big grass right next to in front of the blue, the blue older looking.
No, well, I'm going to show you the the area. So it's actually this area. So the areas that are zoned downtown transition. Are the areas that surround the Veterans Memorial Park. And so the downtown transition zone was something that was identified in the Book Pueblo Viejo Revitalization Plan. So let me show you the next slide. So see Veterans Park there. Uh there was a idea of creating an opportunity for the parcels around. Veterans Park to allow for commercial opportunities. And so those areas are now zoned downtown transition. Or downtown Pueblo Viejo.
Also, please note that the city owns that property on Fourth Street, and we've done a food truck, yeah, food truck event there. So that would also allow for. Future event like that to happen again.
So uh here are pictures of of what the land uses look like in that zone around the park. Um so there's a mix of. Uh like office, uh residential. Um and as as Gay mentioned, on Fourth Street, there's the city-owned uh parcel. Um like the photo on the right, you have a home, but you have space in the front where maybe this works out really well. And then you have Vine Street where you have um like office, business. So um under, under this ordinance for the downtown transition zone. It would be uh one food truck that would be allowed per lot. Or more than uh one food truck, truck on lots or sites that are larger than eleven thousand five hundred square feet. So like the city-owned lot is about eleven, eleven thousand five hundred square feet. So you could actually have more food trucks there. Um the idea would be that operate entirely in the property in the front yard. Um and onsite consumption would be allowed with tables and and chairs. Uh the operating hours would be five P M to twelve A M. And the idea around the operating hours, this wouldn't conflict with uh like the business hours during the day. So it would be more encouraging uh evening experience um in the downtown. That would be uh every day of the week. Um and this would be administrative ap- approval. Now, when we took this applying commission, they recommended that we allow live music. Um not amplified, but with, that would be more acoustical music that could be allowed like uh like trios and. And so that was recommended by the planning commission. Um so uh part of this ordinance is also allowing food trucks in the parks in the city. Uh we don't allow food trucks today in the parks unless it's associated with a special event permit. Um and here's a map of some of those parks where this would be allowed. So it would include, um I'll go into it in a bit. So two food trucks maximum under this ordinance would be allowed at Atlanta Park. Back Duma Park and Rancho Las Forest Park, and those are some of our bigger parks in the city. Um and uh obviously, there's a lot of activity at those parks, especially uh Back Duma and Rancho Las Flores. Um one food truck maximum at Doral Park, which is on fifty, Fifth Avenue fifty and Sierra Vista Park off Tyler. Um and the recommendation of the city manager is to allow a food truck at the Coachella Civic Center in the corporate yard. Uh the operating hours that are recommended would be from five P M to ten P M on weekdays. Um but pretty much all day on the weekends, eight P M to ten P M. And that was recommended by the planning commission because there's a lot of sports activities going on. Even in the morning. Now, for the civic center and corporate yard, what's recommended is the hours be during like the business hours. Um this would be an administrative approval, so they would apply through the permit, and it would be reviewed by city staff. Uh there would be operational requirements, uh which would include maintenance, um. Um onsite consumption for just chairs and tables only. Uh amplified sound wouldn't be allowed in the park. Uh no signage, lights would have to be shielded. Um and there would have to be fifteen feet from certain sensitive areas like fire hydrants, um things of that that sort. Uh and no alcohol uh would be allowed in either the downtown transition zoned uh food trucks or the the parks. Uh they would be responsible with waste disposal. Um and uh there wouldn't. Actually, would be no requirement for parking in either the park for obvious reasons, because there's, that's our parking or or the downtown. Uh they would have to display permits and have trash receptacles. There is a requirement that there be restrooms within two hundred feet. So there would be responsibility, especially around the Veterans Park, to uh be able to accommodate a restroom. So either being a. A fully built restroom or to have some kind of accessible uh portable restroom. It would be valid for one year, um and it would be subject to annual renewals up to four years. So the pilot program is four years. Uh allowed seven days a week. Uh so the downtown transition zone again would be five P M to to midnight. And then uh food trucks at the park would be five P M to ten P M. So uh I'll go into the date farms one, but I want to see if you have any questions first. Want me to go on?
I have quite a bit, but we'll just maybe wait till.
Till the end. Okay, all right, sounds good. All right, um so this is a example of what the website looks like for uh great, the Visit Greater Palm Springs. Uh they have a link actually for some of their visitor destinations for date farms. But when you go to the link, there's actually nothing there today. Um so we have a lot of date farms in the city. Here's a map that shows what we know as our date farms. Um there's probably maybe a few more in there. Um and so we thought maybe there could be an experience that's created with food trucks um in the date farms where it could be an act. Uh a place where people could could get food. A lot of these are located more in the outskirts of the city. Where there isn't uh a lot of food services that are available. Um so under this ordinance, um we were originally recommending one food truck. But the fl- planning commission recommended that we allow for three max, uh operating between seven A M to ten P M. Um the farm would have to be at least a minimum one acre with a minimum of thirty date palms. Um and this would require approval by the planning commission as a non-hearing item. Uh the eligibility for the menu would be the same for the the healthy menu. Um but in addition, that they would have to offer a minimum of one signature offering with date ingredients or offer dates for sale. And they would have similar operational requirements, um area maintenance. Uh they could have onsite consumption area, but no amplified sound would be allowed. Um alcohol could be allowed, and this was recommended by the client commission, but they would have to get a conditional use permit. Uh other requirements, as mentioned before, waste disposal. Uh they would actually have to have a designated parking area. That they create. Uh but we wouldn't have the same requirements that we would have in typical brick and mortar businesses like um. Uh concrete or asphalt uh paid parking and and curbs. Uh they would have to display their permit. Uh they'd be responsible for for providing restrooms, dust control. Uh in addition to the food truck, they would be allowed to have accessory retail pop-ups. Um and they would be required to provide activity areas like cornhole, uh horseshoes or or Jenga. And then they would also be allowed to have active uh wellness ac- activities like organized workouts or yoga. So the the duration of this would also be one year, and it could be renewed up to four years. Um and this would be allowed seven days a week. The hours of operation would be seven A M to ten P M. So um some things to consider with allowing this type of program and what we thought about. Um right now, alcohol wouldn't be allowed in the downtown properties at all under this ordinance as we we wrote it. Um also thinking about food truck con- concentration, how many food trucks would actually go through this program? Now, it could be more limited than if we just had a general program. Uh but here, there would have to be a certain standard met with the healthy menu. Um brick and mortar restaurant considerations, um obviously ice cream trucks. Um the reason why we thought this is okay in the parks is because they're providing a healthy menu. Right now, we don't allow ice cream trucks to station in parks in the the parking lots. Um and then some other um considerations that came up were, well, why just date, date farms? Could it be other agricultural uses? And then what about local vendors versus non-local vendors? Um the other addition from the planning commission was to allow for open grilling like this. So we did ask the county. If this could be permitted in and under cer- certain circumstances, it could be permitted. So this is, this is actually a picture from from Mexico. Um and uh so you don't see a a lot of this um like in in Coachella. But uh there is a path where this could be permitted specifically like on a date farm. So at the end of the pilot program, uh we would provide a report back to the planning commission, I mean, sorry, the the city council. On how the program went and and provide some K P I's um back to you. So our recommendation is to um adopt two ordinances that are mentioned here. Um one of the things that we would like to recommend is not to include the Avenue fifty three soccer park that was recommended by the planning commission. Um just after discussion with our political works director, it is a park that we um are not really in charge of, right? It is rented from Arm Tech, um and it's the the leagues that that maintain that park, and there are no restrooms. Um and then the other thing, which is the oversight online, is to uh identify the hours that the civic center. Corporate yard food trucks could be allowed, which would be during business hours. I didn't have that in the ordinance. And then the second ordinance for the date farms. So that's the end of my presentation. I do want to mention that uh we do have. Um Jacqueline Chavez and Claudia Morales and the rest of the the Blue Zones team. And if you'd like to hear from them too, I'm sure they could introduce their team as well.
Thank you, Gabriel. Do any members of council have any questions for Gabriel or the Blue Zone team?
Yes. Thanks, Gabe, for the presentation. So just a couple of things on um on the ordinance. Is there a way to, um, because I feel like as soon as we open this up and allow for. You know, the food trucks to be, um, getting permits and all that, which I think is great. I think it's gonna do something really great. And especially in our downtown area, um, is there a way to give preference or to take a look at giving preference to the local vendors? Because I know that once we open it up, we're gonna have folks from not the Coachella Valley. So you'll be getting people from the Los Angeles area, um, that are, you know, looking to expand. There's nothing wrong with that at all. I think it's great. I'm all about small business and and, you know, being able to support them. But I really want to make sure that first we're opening the door and supporting our local vendors. So is there any way to stipulate that at all? Would it be something we could potentially consider?
Hoping we can. Can we do that, Carlos?
We'd have to look at that.
And it's just.
I mean, so say we can, we, I mean. We have limitations.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I, it's just.
We could see what how the people, maybe other models, maybe that other communities having corporate try to. Support most look, we, we do definitely understand.
And it's not not, I'm not saying to not allow them. I'm just saying, can we take a look at considering first? The folks who have, you know, been able to use all their savings to be able to. Purchase their their food truck and now they're having this opportunity to finally come into the city and provide, you know, whatever great products they have. And then maybe they don't have that opportunity because we have folks that are already in other areas that's not the Coachella Valley. So it's not about not allowing them, just maybe if we can be able to stipulate that we consider our local vendors first.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I, I mean, I, I mean, maybe if you make the recommendation at the end, this is feasible. But, um, I think that would also be real important in the parks. So I think like Bagduma, Rancho Los Flores, you might have a big demand for that. And so ideally, that could go to a local food truck.
And then the other two things, um, the alcohol sales. Um, I don't feel too comfortable with with taking a look at that in our, in maybe in the pilot program. Maybe we, we allow for, you know, the food trucks to sell just food and whatever else. But I'm thinking that because some of these are going to be allowed in the parks, we have a lot of kids and there's no need for.
It wouldn't be allowed in the park or around Veterans Park.
Okay, okay, so alright, perfect. Just wanted to make sure. Um, and then the last thing is working with the leagues. Because I know that they've been pretty vocal about, um, having access. Only them having access to selling food and snacks and whatever they have in the parks. So I think it'll be important for us to communicate with them from the get-go and let them know that, you know. We are doing this pilot program, we're entering into something different and just so that they're aware and they know and and we don't. You know, have anyone upset as to, you know, you said you weren't gonna allow them, but now you are. Uh, because I know there was a lot of concern, especially when we were doing the sidewalk vending and all that. So I think having that opportunity to tell them ahead of time and also get their feedback, I think it would be helpful too. And that's it for me, Gabe. Thank you.
What's the percentage of healthy foods, right, like?
Twenty-five percent of the menu.
So if I have twenty, okay. Just trying to make sure like, um, but you know, I think the having local vendors is important, but also like. I'm gonna ask you, what's the bureaucratic labor that you're gonna have to do to like pick these people, right? Like, what is that really gonna look like? Because it's like, yeah, we can rank them or I'm not sure what you're gonna make it look like. Because then you, someone has to do the work to pick the, like, why this one and over there. So how do you create like, uh? Not sure what you've envisioned for how you pick these, like, are they rotating, like, you know? Maybe you have five selected food trucks and they each get a designated day of the week. Um, so that we had alternate, so that like Monday, Tuesday is this vendor. And so I don't know what my colleagues think about that, like, where it's, you know, yeah, it's up to three in a day or evening. But you get a rotate, you have a select date, right? Like, but you know, that then that introduces that like, well, I have a permit and. I'm just gonna park out here and, you know, but then it goes to the enforcement component and all that kind of stuff, but, so, you know, more ideas of like. What is the bureaucratic process is gonna go with it, but making it not as bureaucratic so that we can get this off the ground, right? So.
And that's why I think I like the idea of the one-year renewal, so it's not guaranteed for the four years. So if you're happen to be a bad operator, you're not gonna get permitted after the first year.
So I agree with with, uh, council member, Dr. Fierwa. The thing is that Sierra Vista has one food truck, the Odo has one food truck, Rancho, uh, Las Flores has two. And Bagduma has two. So is, how, are they gonna be able to decide which one they want? Or how is it gonna be designated? Like you said, is there gonna be a schedule? And you said it's seven days, right? Okay, so how many times are they gonna be allowed to be at one park? Are they gonna have to move? Or are they gonna be stationed there for the whole week and somebody else isn't gonna have an opportunity? Because during the week, how many vendors can you have?
Yeah, and and my thought on that is that there would be like two specific vendors that are guaranteed there for the year. But that could change, right? If you have recommendations on how that's supposed to be or you want to rotate, I think that would, you know, I think. I would, I would, I would mention that, um. I, the parks is the only thing that we would have to create like a selection process for, right? Because you're gonna have, on the private properties, it's gonna be up to the private property owner to to select them both, um, around the park, right? Because it's gonna be the actual private properties across street from the park and the same thing for the date forms as well.
Thank you, Gabriel. Um, there's quite a few stuff. So for when the leagues are in their M O U, um, around their fields, we cannot allow, um, trucks. And so then are we saying then it's outside of what the hours they're permitted? So, so the M, I know that the leagues have, um, a lot of concerns about the. Obviously, the trucks that come around because they are nonprofits and they do, um. They do rely a great deal on those, um, on the snack shops that they have. I'm wondering if maybe two is, is looking at their schedule as well, because there's non-league days as well, like for the community. And maybe that would be a good alternative to where they're, um, you know, uh, getting their permits for the, just the fields. Because they're not doing the whole park. It's just where the field use is, if that makes sense. Um, also is that when we're allowing two food trucks on certain parks, is there a distance requirement between the two food trucks or is there not?
No, they, so they'd be able to locate wherever, but we would also be able to designate where they should be located. So if you have ideas where that should be, and obviously the two biggest parks are Rancho Los Flores and and Bagduma Park. I think in Bagduma Park, we were thinking the best location would be the the parking lot area by the pool instead of close to the fields.
Yeah, I agree. It's a good alternative. Um, for where we have, um, the, uh, city, um, property. Would they then be, would they then have to pick out two permits? Or is it just one? Because it's not this, it's not the street, um, usage that they would be doing. They would actually be using the site.
On on the site, yeah. So each, yeah, each food truck will get their own permit. But I think if it was on this, we would have to figure out how we would want to do that on our property. So I think if there was interest, you know, I would leave that up to city council if you want to activate that area. Because, um, we have no plans to do that today, but if you wanted to allow for that, then. We would, we would make that available for food trucks.
Yeah, it was very successful when we allowed it years back. Um, also is that I know that we're talking a lot about, um, you know, the the trucks and who's gonna be allowed to be able to sell. I don't know how many food trucks are going to be pulling permits. And I'll say this because when we're talking about, um, local versus non-local. How are we identifying local? Are we saying, you know, in the Coachella Valley? Because local can be outside the city of of Coachella as well. And so what are we identifying as as local? And and for me, non-local is obviously outside the Coachella Valley. And I I say this because I know that a lot of, um, folks, two things from residents. Is that they want to take out or they want to have a food truck business, but they don't have the the resources or the funding. Um, to be able to get a food truck. And then also is the permits that are required from the, you know, that's, that's a county, um, permit as well. In addition to the permit that they have to get in the city of Coachella, in addition to the permit that they need to be able to use that site. So you're talking about three permits. And so it's, it's really important too, is that we're, um, putting this information out. Is that, you know, these folks are understanding it's that there's a total of of three permits. And it's not a, it's a very lengthy process, especially when you don't know what the county is requiring. And many folks don't, don't know, um, that there's a county permit and that there's also a city permit. Obviously, it's, you know, uh, like I said, it's a lengthy process. And so my question is, are we then providing any education and opportunities for those who do want to? Have a food truck business or who do want to get a permit in the city to be able to op in this, operate in these areas? But they yet don't have a a county permit yet.
They definitely would have to have the county permit before we issue our permit. Uh, but I, I, yeah, I think that's a, a good point is having the outreach take place to show what it's gonna take, right? Because I think even when we adopted the sidewalk vendor ordinance, people realized like, it's not that easy. I still have to get my my health permit. And, uh, so you don't see a lot of the sidewalk vendors out there today.
And so, and so, and and the follow-up with that is that I'm not sure how many food trucks, um, we're gonna have. Putting or taking out a permit at all these sites. Because when you look at it collectively, you're talking about downtown, you're talking about every park except for one. And then you're also looking at some of these state ranches. Um, so, you know, I I'm not sure if, if we're going to get that many. But I would like to, um, if we could provide as a city, is get maybe, uh, a list, you know, of information. Is like the Riverside County, who do they need to contact? So if a food truck business is coming to the city of Coachella and is inquiring about a certain zone and saying, hey, you know, I wanna operate here. And you're asking for the requirements, you need to have this. And so it would be beneficial to have a list of things that they need to get. And then also the, the phone and contact information of that department. So we can make it as easy as possible.
No, we could definitely incorporate. That's a great idea. And then we can also do what we do with the sidewalk vendors, do some outreach, uh, educational workshops. And give them all that information, have all those entities be there, the county, uh, health department and so forth. So, yeah, we could definitely move forward with that communication and that education.
I think the education is is really vital to this. Um, and lastly too, is that there's gonna be some folks, um, they have carts and they have ice cream trucks. And I would say in the city of Coachella, we have more of that than we actually have food trucks. And so it's also been making sure that the others know that, you know, they're not allowed to operate in these, in these areas. And that's gonna be a bit hard to reject anybody. Um, so that's my, that's my feedback. So I would like to see an educational portion to it, attached to it. And then also any way to streamline any processes, um, and even provide applications if we have. Um, there, I know, uh, at the corporate yard, we have those applications. And maybe just having like the county application as well and the city application, anything to make it as easy as possible. It's already so challenging as it is.
Yeah, thank you. These are great points. Obviously, this is also a program that doesn't exist in any city in the, in Riverside County right now. So there's gonna be some things that we're gonna work through.
And then I also support allowing the city, that corner, um, that city property to be allowed as well for the food trucks. I mean, it's just, it's there, um, and, you know, I think that's even maybe in better area than some of that street. So, um, I, the Blue Zone team, is there anything that you would like to add or provide any comments for city council?
Good evening. My name is Claudia Morales and I'm part of the Blue Zones Food Policy National Team. Uh, first, I want to say I appreciate you wanting to have a robust discussion about this, because I think all the questions that you're asking are very pertinent and very important. I do want to say that per, um, the partnership that we have currently, there will be technical assistance provided to the team. To help Gabriel really think through a lot of this, uh, questions that you're bringing up. As an example, I want to share, I already, I can provide the information to Gabriel. Um, I also previously worked with the city of L A to adopt a similar policy called the Good Food Zones. Where it was really wanting to promote healthy food retail adoption with small businesses particularly. And there was criteria that was developed that really indicated a priority for local, um, community members. Based on SIP code, based on, um, proven relationship and presence in that community that they wanted to operate. So there is a way to establish criteria that would really create these opportunities for however you wanted to find local residents, right? Um, the other thing that I want to say is, per that policy that we worked on. And in partnership with existing organizations that are already operating in the, um, city of L A. We were able to then to create a very smooth process of any person coming in to first receive information about how to apply for the permit. And to subsequently be able to receive technical assistance for business planning if they needed to, um, tap into financial resources through micro lenders. And there was a dedicated position that was created within the city to serve sort of like as as a concierge. Say, I'm gonna help you navigate this by making those referrals, those soft introductions. So I, I agree with you that it's necessary to support these small food business entrepreneurs. I also want to say that it's a, an incredible opportunity to say, how do we want to start to develop culture around healthy eating? Uh, where people, where people are really looking forward to those, um, options available. We met with, um, the, the parents that run the leagues for the soccer yesterday. Uh, we were, we've met with school board members here in Coachella. We've conducted focus group with young people, with adults as well. And generally, the sentiment that we're seeing is that people want healthier options, right? Um, so I think that this could be a great opportunity, not just to promote well-being, but also economic development, uh, for the city. So I myself would be available to keep working with the team to figure out what makes sense for you, in addition to a couple of other colleagues.
Years before, when I was, um, doing a lot of, uh, library service, community work. Um, I partnered with the university health systems and back then, if you can remember, they were providing that free program. It was excellent. They came in and, you know, they allowed like tastings and, and I think that they removed that program. I don't think it's allowed. I don't think it's available anymore. But, um, I, I think it's a wonderful opportunity. Um, I remember too is that I wanted to change like some of the, um, we're allowing developments is what type of? Like, uh, fast food restaurants came through. And I remember I, I was in the planning commission, I was really proud. I changed, there was a fast food restaurant that was, that they were allowed. And I, I asked for it to be removed and be, uh, replaced with the healthier restaurant. And it came to city council and it was rejected. But I just, those are just ways of of also making sure that as a city, that we're holding ourselves accountable and responsible. To making sure that we have a, a healthy lifestyle and, um, opportunities here at the city.
Absolutely. And what I also appreciate, uh, you know, pilot program, you get to try different things. You have those K P I's that are really important to then be able to show the value and impact in the community. But I think that allows you to think of other opportunities where there's working with, uh, corner stores, working with other entities to then start to adopt more of that healthy retail food.
Perfect. Is there any other comments from council members?
The, um, like, the date farm one, Gabriel, is, uh, requires, um, line commission because it's an, uh. Technically considered like a special event, right? That way it goes under, that's why they, they wanted that that way. Just want to make sure that's why it went that way.
Yeah, they have to organize everything on a plot plan with parking, so that's why.
Um, is there a reason why the planning commission identified that they would be able to use, um, alcohol consumption and not in the other areas? Considering that this is a blue zone area. and not in the other areas, considering that this is a blue zone area and we're promoting healthy options?
Well, they brought this up to us too. So they they're like, hey, we would prefer if you didn't allow al- alcohol, uh but that's where the planning commission wanted to go with it. Um, why there versus the private properties around the dump? I don't, I don't know why, uh but uh I think, I think they thought it added to the experience on the farm.
Yeah. Um, I I don't, did you guys wanna make comments?
Oh, I am. Um, gonna add that too. Hi, my name is Jacqueline Chiefs, Director of Policy and Partnerships for Blue Zones. And thank you so much. I want to applaud you all for being so innovative as a city with starting out with this. Um, and I just want to also plug in that you have um a lot of healthcare systems invested in this uh Blue Zones project. As you probably already know, Inland Empire Health Plan and the foundation has Permanente Molina Healthcare, Riverside University Health Systems, Eisenhower Health. They're all looking at um how we can make everyone's life um better and how we can improve health outcomes. And we are interested in equity as well with food access. So I just wanted to applaud and thank you for your time with all of you talking with us this week. Um, Aunt Angela is helping set all of this up. Um, with alcohol, we do have, one of our principles around the world is wine at five. Um, and so you might have heard that already and wondered, why do we have alcohol policy then? But it is a healthy relationship with alcohol. And so we focus on reducing binge drinking and excessive drinking and underage drinking and improving public safety. So we could look into different policies with you, um whether that's limiting number of drinks sold um or or different um areas, but that's that's for future implications. And I also want to note, with the no smoking, also to add language around vaping, as we've seen um that trend change over time too. But just want to reiterate, um Claudia, uh our food systems lead, that we are all here for you. You have technical assistance. Um, part of the project is providing that um over the three-year period starting in June. And so um you have also examples of um Blue Zones up in Salinas, who did the same thing. They did uh healthy food trucks, ate one of their taco trucks, very, very good. Um, and you also have Bakersfield. So we have teams that can come to support uh the Blue Zones local team here and talk through some of the barriers they've been during the successes. And they've also been gathering data too that we can share.
Did any of them allow alcohol use?
Not that I know of.
Yeah. So I I personally, I'm not supportive of the alcohol use. I think if we're gonna promote the healthy option, um it's just, that's my opinion and also can have theirs. But um then that would be just another, it would just be a special event permit, you know, right? Gabriel, I mean, it wouldn't be a healthy um planning event. It would just be in the ranches, they can have special event permits and they can have special events. So I I think that on their own already, they have special events that they allow alcohol use. So is there uh a motion to move it forward?
Motion to um move it forward, um with omitting the uh, I'm in favor of removing the alcohol in the day. So that we can stick and sustain and make it that we're promoting the health component.
Okay, and I would just recommend including the un- underlying portion.
So I'll read it, I'll read the introducing ordinance number twelve eighteen for the first reading by title only to establish at Coachella healthy food truck permit pilot program for the operation of mobile food trucks and qualifying city, qualifying city parks, parcels and downtown zones, DTPV and TRPV zones, not including Avenue fifty-three Soccer Park and allowing food trucks at the Coachella Civic Center and Corporate Yard during business hours. And then introducing ordinance number twelve nineteen for first reading by title only to establish at Coachella healthy food truck permit pilot program for the operation of mobile food trucks at active date farms with the exception, with the removal of alcohol at be sold at.
Is there a second?
One second.
I'll take one. Council member Perez?
Aye.
Council member Tejera?
Aye.
Council member Nathan?
Aye.
Mayor Antonio Valo?
Yes. Thank you, Gabriel. And I'll ask the maintenance to re- retrain. Thank you, ladies. Thank you for supporting us. Thank you.
Are we gonna get out, be able to get a green juice in downtown? And salad? All right, um, we'll move on now to public hearing item. This ordinance number tw- twenty, twelve twenty, first reading amending for zoning ordinance amendment number twenty-four dash zero-two, streamline code amendments faced to to amend Coachella Municipal Code Title seventeen. We'll take a full staff report.
Mr. Merritt, uh pass eight o'clock, I don't know if you want to take public comments now or wait?
Wow, we'd lost track of time. But if uh is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to address the City Council of the Councils?
No one online.
All right, we'll uh move on now to her presentation. Okay, Mr. Perez?
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, Gabriel Perez again. So this item is a a pretty big item, so I can go as quickly through this as possible. So if you want to go slower, just let me know. Uh, but this is concerning amendments to our zoning code. So we do look through our zoning code and identify opportunities to be able to streamline and make things more flexible. Um, that's the intent of 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 this. Um, and uh just for everyone's benefit, we have a zoning ordinance that establishes permitted uses and zoning standards in all our different zones in the city. Uh, a lot of those standards are developed subjectively. Um, and those standards are different across cities. Uh, so this is an opportunity for you to look at those standards, uh to make modifications where you see fit. Uh, and these are just our recommendations of staff. So some background, uh we did bring um something to you uh a while ago uh in two thousand twenty-two to work on some of these code amendments that would look at creating more flexibility and address new changes in state law. Uh, the planning commission did recommend these code amendments before you today on November twentieth uh with some modifications. So I'm gonna start with the first chapter. Um, so we have a chapter uh just called Administration Generally. It identifies the process for appeals um in the city. So um so basically, what there's an item that comes before a planning commission or to staff, it could be appealed to the City Council at the end of the day. So what we're recommending is that to modify the requirement of application decision, appeal date from fifteen days on which the the decision was made, rather than what our code says right now, which is um identifies the appeal date from the period from the time when the notice of determination was mailed. So what that means is that the planner will write a a a notice uh and mail it to the applicant and identify with the action that was taken. Most other cities just identify the date that the action was taken as the point of when the appeal period uh would start. Um, and so that's what we're recommending here. So just any questions on that? This is really to make it consistent with a lot of our surrounding cities. The next one is minor modifications. So uh we do have a minor modification uh process in the city, but it's limited to certain standards. Uh, what I'm recommending is for us to be very flexible on how we allow minor minor modifications. Um, we'd probably see a lot of this with our residential um zones. So allowing minor minor modifications by ten percent of a numerical development standard um and with the approval of a minor modification permit. So we 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 would be creating that minor modification permit. So there would be four modifications, um a resident would be allowed per property um and without the need to make a hardship finding. So if you want to make a minor modification today, under the certain criteria that we allow in the city, we'd have to make variance findings. And so we want to do this without having to make those variance findings, because sometimes um like maybe it's not a hardship, but why not allow for that ten percent variation? So this could apply to things like a lot area size, um setback, uh fence height, building height. But what the planning commission did not want to allow is that this be allow for exception for residential front yard hardscape. So allowing for wider driveways than what's already allowed, so. Any questions on that? Okay, um the other is establishing a minor modification permit. So um this would be the um administrative level decision. Um, and so if if um under the uh this permit, this would actually be reported to the planning commission at their their next regular meeting. So if we made an administrative decision that allowed for this minor modification, the planning commission would have the ability to see what that decision that was made. And if they wanted to appeal it up to the planning commission, they'd be able to do that. So next is applicant applicant request to change approved application. So let's say you approved a project. This would create a a process for an applicant to make modifications to their project and allow the planning director to approve those minor modifications that are deemed minor. We don't have any language in the code to allow for this. Um, so any modifications not considered minor would require approval back to the final decision maker. So if the council was the final decision maker, um then if it's major, then it would have to come back to you. Next is architectural review findings. So this is when we looked at projects and their architecture. Uh, we don't have findings in our ordinance that uh that are identified for us to make at the planning commission or the city council. You really should have findings that you make when you're approving a project. So we don't have that for architectural review, so we're recommending that we include these findings. And that includes things like compatibility with general plan and the zoning regulations. Um, the next is for residential districts. Um, so for all residential districts, we're recommending allowing um agricultural uses that are existing to continue. Right now, any agriculture that's in a residential zone today. And that includes a lot of property on the east side of the eighty-six expressway. Essentially, that would be non-conforming. And so we'd allow it, we'd like that to be uh continued permitted use. Uh, for residential districts for new projects, uh we do have language in our general plan about energy efficiency and heat island reduction strategies. So we would recommend that uh we uh require this to be included as a component for a proposal for new residential projects um in the city. Um, second, perimeter landscape setbacks. So right now, we don't have any residential perimeter setbacks at all established in our zoning code. Um, so if you look, if you see a lot of the development that happened around the year two thousand in the city, you see some of the setbacks are maybe like five feet from the sidewalk um instead of a lot of the larger setbacks that you see around the Coachella Valley. Um, so this, what we're recommending is establishing uh a ten-foot minimum perimeter setback um and an average of twenty feet perimeter landscape setback. This would be consistent, actually with our uh Jason City, City of La Quinta has a standard um and some of the other cities in the Coachella Valley as well. Uh, it would also establish a shade standard of thirty percent for landscape areas. So we don't have a shade standard, but this would help uh mitigate the heat island effect in the city. Uh, here's, this is an example of what we did with Pyramid Ranch. So we applied the general plan standards for energy efficiency. So they had to provide a shade exhibit. And the areas that couldn't be shaded during the day, they would show an example of how they would use trees to mitigate um those um uh the the heat effects in the neighborhood. Um, and then obviously, trees have a an important role in in mitigating um the heat island effect in in the city. Uh, we're also recommending that uh we establish a standard for California native species for landscaping of forty percent. Um, there are other cities, like this last city that I came from before coming to Coachella was a sixty percent standard for native plants. Uh, but we never had complaints about um developers meeting that standard. Uh, the other is for rear-facing residences in residential projects. A lot of times you'll see like a boxy look to the back of a home. So this would set a standard so that anything more than one story would have to have structural variation. The last item on here is establishing more Vista Santa Rosa um guidelines with respect to development um at the project perimeters along Avenue fifty, fifty-two Van Buren Street, Avenue fifty-three, Avenue fifty-four, south of Avenue fifty. I'm gonna show you what this looks like um on the map. But basically, that standard is equestrian fencing with agrarian lighting, signage and a ten-foot wide decomposed granite trail, sorry, um not grant, but granite trail. And the date palms planted twenty feet on center. Very similar to kind of what we did with the Pyramid Ranch, uh but this comes from the Vista Santa Rosa guidelines. So we would adopt a similar standard to this, which is kind of preserves um some of that agricultural and equestrian feel in some of the outskirts of the city. Um, and this is also from those guidelines. And if you could see in blue, which looks like a cross, uh this would be the perimeter area where we would establish that standard. So um the north and south street is Van Buren and then the east and west street is Avenue fifty-two. Um, also for residential districts, we would establish a policy or standard that would require the developers to propose proactive circulation design. So a lot of times after a project is built, we're often putting speed bumps in the residential subdivision. We would like the applicant to think about this first before um us having to take care of this issue after the project's built. So we think this would be good for the city. Any questions on residential? We'll go on to commercial. So what we'd recommend is lifting the limitation on the size of commercial buildings in our commercial neighborhood zone, which is a lot of the properties along Caesar Travis Street. So there actually is a limitation on the size of the of commercial buildings of ten thousand feet and then thirty-five thousand square feet for multi-tenant buildings. So if we want to attract bigger stores, we actually have a limitation right now. Um, establishing a sidewalk improvement standard on Caesar Travis Street to nine feet. Right now, the standard would be six feet, but we did a study called the Harrison Street Corridor Study that recommends a a nine-foot wide sidewalk. And so that would increase uh pedestrian um connectivity in our in our our major corridor. Um, and that we would require new Caesar Travis Street development to be consistent with that study that was prepared, which included different development standards that encourage walkability. Um, so commercial zones, um and let me know if you want some of this to be sped up. I'm happy to do that, because there's a lot of material here. Good? Okay, all right, commercial zones. Um, so we have the neighborhood commercial, general commercial and regional commercial zone um allowing for agricultural uses as a permitted use, because we do have those uses in in this zone today. Uh, but right now, it would be considered a non-conforming zone. The other is to establish standards for landscape maintenance. So require that the developer maintain their landscaping according to their landscape plan. And if they do make a modification to their landscaping, that it needs to be approved by the by the city. So if they tear out trees and decide to reduce their landscaping, well, they need to run this by staff, right? Instead of just doing it. Uh, the other is for rooftop screening. So um some of you that might have been on the planning commission may have thought we had a rooftop screening standard, but we don't. It was off obvious, often a condition of approval. So we're just recommending that be included in the code. And similar to the residential zones, um we would recommend that the uh applicants for new projects already consider energy efficient design and heat island reduction strategies, however they propose to do it um with their projects upon application. So the other, this came from the planning commission, is that they want a requirement for pressure washing along uh commercial building frontages. So this is something that came from the the planning commission. So what we identified is language that says that there should be a program for weekly pressure washing um at um all these, all these commercial areas in the city. For the manufacturing zones, uh again, adding permitted uses of agricultural activity that's existing to to be allowed to continue. But the other is to allow nurseries. So we actually, in our sphere of influence, have are like three nurseries that exist out there. Uh, if they were ever a part of the city, then they would actually be considered non-conforming uses. But I don't see a problem um having those uses to continue in the city. Um, and then allowing as conditional uses hotels um on major frontages and primary arterials. So an example of this would be like Airport Boulevard. We actually have a property that extends to Airport Boulevard near the eighty-six expressway. Uh, but that would be a good location potentially for a hotel, considering the airport, the hits facility. But currently, that zone does not allow hotels. So planning a development, so this one's kind of exciting to me. Um, so we have a standard for plenty of developments only for residential zones. So in a residential zone, a developer could propose any of their own standards if they wanted to with approval of a change of zone in the conditional use permit. In the city of Palm Springs, they allow planned unit developments across all zoning districts. So that could include commercial and industrial. So if someone wanted to propose a new use. Or they just wanted to modify their standards, just basically because they wanted a lot of flexibility, they wanted to be creative. And not just be subjected to what our zoning standards say, they could propose that. Ultimately, the council and the planning commission would have to approve it. What we'd recommend is that it not require change of zone anymore, that it would just require conditional use permit. That could be approved at the planning commission level. That's something similar to what La Quinta has. They just require approval at the planning commission. So the last is actually requiring a public benefit for planning development. So if you want. Exceptions to all the development standards in the city, that you would need to propose a public benefit. In order to do so. So that could be offsite improvements, onsite public amenities. And this is actually something that Palm Springs has in their planning development standards. So next is front yard walls and front yard pools and spas. So we don't allow. Front yard walls in a front yard setback to exceed. More than thirty two inches in height. And so you can't do like a six foot courtyard in the city. So you can go thirty two inches and above that needs to be, you you have to be able to see through. Oftentimes, that's accomplished with wrought iron. So what we're recommending is to do something different and and giving examples. So to be able to allow for. Courtyards in the front yard. As long as they're 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 done well, and they would have an entryway. You see a lot of this common in. So this is typically what you would see in Coachella, and this is currently what's allowed. But you couldn't have a full. Screened six foot wall in the front yard. Some examples in our downtown, but in the Jason City, La Quinta, they allow for these courtyards that are six feet. They look pretty attractive. You see this a lot in the Cove area. So this is what it would look like on a site plant. So. You know, here's one with a front facing entry into the courtyard. And here's a picture from La Quinta giving some comparison. A side entry from the driveway. And what that could look like. And then one at the corner. An example of what that actually looks like. On a residential property. So we're recommending this as a way to allow for flexibility. What the planning commission wanted to do was they were concerned about, well, what happens to the landscaping in front of the wall? So there would be a requirement that they they enter to a maintenance agreement with the city to make sure that it's maintained, that they provide a landscape plan. For that area in front of the the block wall. So next is is this one. You've probably seen this before. So we had a proliferation of. Driveway canopies throughout the city, right? And and a lot of residents had installed this without permits. For the purposes of shading vehicles that were parked in the driveway. So here's an example of one. Here's another example in the city. Some other examples that cover three vehicles, right? So. So with the proliferation, there was a recommendation of of from city manager of a developing. What would a standard look like if we were to adopt one in the city? And this was kind of difficult. We were trying to look for examples in the Coachella Valley. No other city has a standard for allowing these canopies on the on driveways. We couldn't find any in the state. So this would be something new. But we thought, well, how do we take care of the issues of the quality of life in the neighborhood? So if everyone had a driveway. Canopy, this is kind of like what it might look like. So. The planning commission really vetted this one quite a bit. And. So this is what is being recommended. So this is all in the residential, single family residential zone, right? So what we're recommending establishing. Allowing for it, right? And I'm going to go into this in a bit. The maximum height would be twelve feet. The maximum coverage would be sixty percent of the total driveway. Or no more than four hundred square feet in area. It would have to maintain setbacks of five feet from site property lines, and it cannot encroach into the right away. And here's just the more of the detailed standards. But what I want to point out is. What we're trying to do is ensure that it maintains compatibility with the existing home. So it should have that compatibility with the materials that are used with with the building. That the planning commission was concerned about allowing this for a lot of the new residential development. So establishing a cutoff period of of two thousand, so anything. Constructor after the year two thousand would not be allowed to have this front. Yard driveway canopy over the driveway. And. And then they also wanted to add something about not allowing. It if someone converted their garage into an ADU because basically they limited the ability for them to park. And save their garage or their vehicles in it. By eliminating the garage. So this gives you an example of the standard, what that would look like. So on a typical lot, it would probably be about. Sixteen by eighteen feet. In the in the front yard. So that way it also avoids the public right away. And the idea is so that this would be. Simply built, so it's not as noticeable in the front yard. The planning commission did recommend an amnesty program for a lot of the existing unpermitted residential driveways. Constructed. And so originally, we were looking at allowing everything prior to December twenty twenty four. But we realized this was going to be very difficult to administer. So what we recommend is the planning commission that we use the date of November of two thousand twenty two, because that's when we have availability of street view. On Google to be able to see if those driveways. Canopies exist. There's nothing that exists after that date that we were able to find. The other thing that we'd recommend is that it not exceed twenty feet, because what if someone has. A large front yard canopy that covered the whole front yard. We think that might not be a good look for for a front yard. Okay, so the other that was items that were added by the planning commission. Is that they wanted to modify. The setback from a. From structures in the rear yard from ten feet to five feet. So right now we have a distance that requires ten foot separation between residential structures and accessory structures. And to modify it to five feet, we did check with the fire department. And they don't have any concern about that. So we thought that standard was there because of safety. But that it is not a safety concern for the building division or for the fire department. The other requirement or the other allowance the plan commission wanted to allow was for sheltering. Of RVs in the side yard. And so we looked into this more after the plan commission meeting. We just don't recommend that there be. A full structure that goes to the property line on the side yard, because I think that would be unsafe. But to allow for awnings that project from the side of the the residence. Into the side yard. So that was a lot here. Um, there's over ten chapters we're modifying here with this amendment. But this is going to do a lot for the city in terms of making things flexible for the community. And establishing some good standards for maintenance and in the city. But I would, I would recommend that we adopt it. But also adding that canopies under the amnesty program for front yard driveways not exceed twenty five even width. That's the end of my staff report. Happy to answer any questions.
Any question?
This is heavy, Gabriel. It's like, it's really, really heavy.
It it's heavy. The planning commission, they went through a study session and two plan commission meetings for this.
We both went to twenty. We have a study session.
We we could, you know.
Say it is because there's so much in here and it requires so many different. Like permits and processes that I don't even know where to where to start because it's it's so heavy. So just a little bit of of information beforehand would have been just helpful.
What was the reasoning for the pre two thousand home? Is it because of the size of the lot in the front to be able to put it? Or is it just? As I'm like, you know, some of the pictures you showed, those are post two thousand. So I'm wondering what's going to happen to those people, right? That they already set it up and.
Well, they would, if they were built prior to November twenty twenty two, remember they would also be.
So they would be fine.
They would have still get their permits and make sure everything's safe. But every but so I I don't know why the planning commission set that date, but that's. About the date when a lot of the new development was starting to happen in the city. There was the big boom around that time between two thousand and two thousand eight. Maybe that's why.
The why, like, because, you know, and then I feel like certain people get to have it and some people don't and. Some people have nicer trees, so they have a lot of more shade in their homes. So. But it's then it like makes it like, because of those developments that have the. Amnesty and they're going to keep it. Then they'll be like, well, you get to have it. But then I go. You know, they go to the office and try to pull permit. They're like, well, you can't have it. But then. The neighbor next to me can. So that's where it kind of gets kind of for me kind of funky because. My neighbor can, but that's because, you know, it's.
Are you proposing to change that to allow? Every home or every neighborhood?
And I was just trying to find out like the why, but. Seems like they just wanted that. That was the set date, so.
Yeah, yeah, this one was difficult too, right? What's what's going to be the the fairest way to do something if we're going to allow? Some of this to exist in the city. And this is what the plan commission settled on.
Could it be that they're thinking is that they want to maintain standards in some older communities that. Probably need a little bit of work, you know, in terms of. Just aesthetics, the number of cars they got parked all over their neighborhood, over their front yard. I mean. What could be the thinking? In terms of why? Homes. Only from two thousand that are allowed this versus if you have a home in nineteen eighty like in. You know, volume level. Why can't they do that?
They would. Yeah, I mean, I think some of the discussion was that the newer homes were considered after two thousand. And they didn't want to see this in in the newer communities.
In other words, maintaining the development standards within the New York community. Which makes sense. Yeah, makes sense.
And you know, we've previously on some other areas, I know they've looked at. The New York community is saying, let's keep them kind of intact or new. Or and then when they bring bystanders on other, I think on the garage conversions. They kind of use something being like the New York communities or beer kind of intact, keep them as such and maybe a lot. I know they consider that for the. Garage convergence. That might be similar thinking, but I I.
Yeah, I mean, look, if you bought a home in two thousand and two thousand and twenty. And you're still got a big mortgage, probably another. I don't know. Twenty four years or something like that, twenty six years. And then all of a sudden, neighbors start to change the way you initially bought it. That's going to create a little problem in there. I can see that. You know, I can see that. Whereas older communities are paid off and. Ten not to, well, they're a little bit mismatched too. You know, I mean, some of our older communities are mismatched, like they're like. One home design is not like the same as the others. And some of the lot setbacks are a lot different than others too. So I can see that. I am. I I noticed with respect to like the suburban neighborhood, neighborhood, commercial zones. Some of the allowable uses are like public and private golf courses. And I and I I generally like that, you know, but I also think that that's kind of like an homage. To the way the Coachella Valley has traditionally developed. We've got a hundred and twenty three golf courses. And so. The initial thinking about a lot of planners was, hey, we we uh. We we want to see these, these, you know, golf suburban urban neighborhoods allow for golf. But as trends have set like changed. So for example. You got the, you got communities now that are starting to develop. Like exclusive pickleball courts because golf is no longer the thing. And then you have others like other, like in the other neighborhoods. Where they're trying like, like, like top golf. Is coming in or something. And like, there's a bunch of apartments around. Or now there's like. You know, soccer. Like a private, public soccer facilities in urban or suburban neighborhoods. And. And so I'm wondering how, and I I, by the way, I like what you're talking about with the PUD. I think that's a good flexible way with community benefit. But if say somebody wanted to develop. Like a soccer facility, which I think we're probably like the East End is probably going to get one. How could our zones like accommodate that type of use? And I think. When you heard somebody talking about soccer leagues here earlier, but. Like, how can we position ourselves to allow these through a streamlined zoning? Or is it through the PUD process where in the future we want to see these types of. Use, I I mean. You know, these. Sports leagues are getting very like these club teams are getting big, but they're doing like small arenas. You know, so I'm like, I'm thinking, can we, can we modify and create some allowable uses? That where you have public golf courses also include, you know, recreational. Like pickleball. You know. Soccer, public, private facilities. Is that what we have to amend it at this point?
You could amend the permitted uses, but the easier way to do it on a case by case basis is probably through the planning development. And basically through this ordinance, you would be making that process easier, right? With doesn't have to go all the way to city council anymore. Under this proposal, it would require CUP that just goes to the planning commission.
You're saying on the P D and the planning development.
Yeah. And then under those proposals, the plan commission would review something like that on its merits, right? So there might be something creative that we've never seen before, but the PUD allows you to be able to. Propose something and then allow decision maker to make the final decision.
And you talked about, or it's proposed that community benefit be added. And you, basically, we're mentioning that we're looking at community benefits as like sidewalks and infrastructure. And isn't that too easy? Because aren't they supposed to build sidewalks and infrastructure as part of their development in order? So is could community benefit be looked at more like a monetary thing? So for example, if. Somebody wanted to produce like bring an arena or something like that, we had a ticket tax or something like that. That's a huge community benefit that's ongoing. That, but then at the same time, like. We're not letting them off the hook with like just like infrastructure.
It 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 could be under this. So the decision ultimately would be with the the plan commission, right? If it just goes to the plan commission, if it's a track map. And it goes with the track map, it would go to the city council. But that would be up to, they could propose it. Ultimately, you or the plan commission would have to approve that.
So it does come to the city council, not just to the.
No, it just right now is proposed if it's just a PUD with architectural review, it would just go to the planning commission. It it involves something that would normally go to the city council, like a change of zone or a tentative track map, then it would come to council.
Yeah, I'm just wondering like if we're community benefit like. I I'd like to at least that portion. I'd like to have the council take them like be part of that approval, you know? Because it could be that. They're just asking for roads. And maybe we could ask for a little bit more and. And certainly, you know, when it comes to revenue, particularly if like some of the proposals is. Is like recreational or or private recreational club teams that are going to be bringing in. Thousand, two thousand teams, right? Like. You know, council should have a little bit of a save. I do like the flexibility that you're offering through the P D. You know, it it allows allows developers and planners and everybody to get creative. Very streamlined and cool. But on that community benefit side, I'd like us to at least look at it, be able to look at it and say, hey, this is good. You know, examples of P Ds that like someone can go into an industrial area, propose a. I don't know, you know, a hotel like you mentioned. And. The count the. That may not be a good example, but there are some examples where we want to maximize revenue. You know, rather it be T L T, rather it be sales tax or whatever. You know? So I'm just thinking that way.
And that's up to the council. So right now it's set up. So the plan commission will review it. But if the council always wants to review it because of the. But if the council always wants to review it because of the public benefit, then you could stipulate that.
I just think on, when it comes to public benefit, like, let's be defined, I think it's important that we have a good understanding of that, you know? Everything else, like the zoning changes and everything, like, keep it there, streamline, but the public benefit, it's almost like a developer's agreement, right, Carlos?
You consider that, that's, that's, you could probably get similar benefits, to D A or to a public benefit.
Yeah, so a D A or public benefit, so a D A would come to us, you know? Uh, uh, why wouldn't a public benefit come to us? So that's, that's something, maybe we wanna allow all these on that side to come to us. But I do think, like, you know, as. As people's habits change, like, golf courses are great, it's great, you know, you can do it on some of our zones. But can, can you create a community that, that has twenty pickleball courts? And they're gonna wanna do, like. Like apartments around it, but then, maybe it's part of a new clubhouse where they're gonna try to generate revenue or something like that, I don't know. How do we allow for that, you know? And you're saying P U D is the way to go, but maybe in the future, we can, we can look at streamlining. That, if the trends are that way, right, cause, I mean, that's what the. Coachella Valley Visitors Bureau is saying that habits are changing, everybody's not playing golf anymore, they're like. You know what I mean? They're doing a lot of things. Uh, like pickleball, would have known that that was gonna be popular, you know, just thinking out loud here. So what does the council wanna do? Does it wanna have a study session, go over this for five hours? Or does it want to trust the planning commission's work and add some amendments?
So you mentioned that the planning commission had how many study sessions on, on these codes?
Two study sessions and then one regular planning commission meeting.
So I think, I mean, from what I read, it looks like they went over it pretty thoroughly. Um, and I'm sure with your guidance too, they were able to take a look at everything, I think with the canopies and all that. Um, to me, it makes sense, I think what they're trying to do is. You know, keep the value of the newer homes, perhaps, that, you know, are being built and don't have. You know, like, the communities, the newer communities that are being built to just keep the value that they have, and. Sometimes some of the canopies can, are, or are built on the right of way. And that could become potentially an issue for various reasons. Um, but I, I trust that, you know, the planning commission took a look at this, these study sessions are very heavy. And for anyone who's been on the planning commission, we know how intense some of the. Our agendas can be, and, um, I'm comfortable with. Moving forward with, you know, staff's recommendation and the planning commission, um, so I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with this item.
That a motion?
That is a motion, motion to approve.
First reading, right? It's gonna come back.
Anyway.
I'll, I'll second, but I, I wanna add, uh, uh, the requests. That the public benefit on the P U Ds come to us, that we, we get to review them because they're very similar to D A's. I think that would be something that we should do, um. And we'll go from there.
Does that have an amendment to the motion then?
Will you accept that amendment?
Yeah, absolutely.
What makes me a bit uncomfortable, and, and, you know, it, it sounds like the P C went through a very thorough process. Which just makes me uncomfortable that there isn't that much feedback that we can provide. Because you're going over through so many, manufacturing, commercial, Cesar Chavez, and it's so many different areas and agriculture. And so these revisions are being made, which I fully support anything that's being streamlined, but it's hard for me to, to say yes to all of it. Not knowing what, uh, if there was other input, or any other thing that we could. Easier, or maybe some things that we disagree on, and then also is that, what this does too is that. Some of it's not gonna be going to city council anymore, it's gonna stay with the planning commission, you know, are we comfortable with that as well? It, it just, to, to what extent are we comfortable with just leaving it there and not having it come to here? Especially when we're looking at bigger projects.
And if there are some things that you saw today that you aren't comfortable with, I think another approach you could have is. Uh, moving forward with everything that you are comfortable with and having whatever it is that you might wanna study more, come back to the city council.
I'm so long, my, my tablet is not charged anywhere, I can't see it anywhere. Um, it, it's just hard for me because there is so many components to it, and I think it's how many. Codes that we're changing, I counted them, it was like twenty-one on there, and it's, it's not, uh, you know, it's a bit unusual. When you have one item stacked with twenty-one, you know, codes that are being changed. And so that's just my, my concern, I am a bit uncomfortable, and, and to select which ones. You know, I am comfortable with, it would take even additional time, you know, for me to go through each one and see what. And it's not so much what I approve, but it's rather, is what input can we provide also? Working directly with the communities and with residents, uh, about some of the things that they're asking for. And a lot of stuff that there being, obviously, um, there's a lot of violations, you know, because folks came through or, or built things a certain way. Uh, but times are changing, they are changing, and so we need to also make sure that, um, we're. Uh, adapting to, to the changes and we're developing and growing as a city.
Well, there's a motion in the second, uh. Are there's any more discussion? Seeing then, can we ask for a roll call?
And wanna make sure, you know, council member, oh god, is right about some of this stuff, so, in the second read-in. I have some more points for you when I go over or finish some comments there for that, so.
Does that, uh, what is your?
Oh, my vote, uh, yes.
Hi.
I'm gonna abstain only simply because I don't, I just would like more information on this. Mayor Loveless?
Hi. Motion carries five, four, one, zero. All right, with that, we'll go on to reports and requests. From council comments, report on miscellaneous committees, I just start to, my, and that with. Your new council member, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, I'm glad to be here and I'm ready to work hard, that's all I have to say right now. Pleasure working with you guys.
Welcome aboard, uh, we will now go to council member, uh, Figueroa.
I went to, um. Remember what day of the week it is, Wednesday, um, the parade was, uh, last week, uh, it was fun seeing all the, um. Families and the kids, and you know, I like that Santa Claus was in the middle of the parade. So that was really great, cause it like, was in between, and it wasn't at the end, cause like, la- last year, uh, he was at the end and. Everyone was like, kind of sparse out, um, I, I gotta write the. I, I, I tried to get Denise to race me on the, um, on this, on the ice lane, but. I didn't get anyone to race me, so I raced my new friend that I made online, she beat me, oh.
I've never raced you.
I got, I, I got my bru- I got, I got, what is it called, a trophy when you, you just have to get a scap somehow, so. That was fun, and I just wanted to try, cause I didn't see, I've always seen it, and I wanted to see, it's pretty scary, I'm like, I don't know how little kids do that, so. Um, but it was great that we had food and different options, the tree lighting ceremony was great, um. And then, uh, the mosquito vector control people scored second place on Friday, um, they're having their annual, um. Um, holiday luncheon, so I'll be taking the trophy, and they're all excited to see their second place trophy, and they said next year they're gonna beat the, the other, the other float, so. Um, there's that, and then, uh, looking forward to a couple ceremonies, a couple events this week, tomorrow's the Lady Guadalupe of March, I'm excited to see them pass by the city. And then, um, next year's this, next week is the senior volunteer of the year, so I'm excited to go, uh, enjoy some holiday spirit with the seniors over there. And then hopefully everyone has happy holidays, um, I'm not sure where we ended up with the, um, the safety for fireworks and firearms. Um, campaign, I don't know, we're launching that.
Yeah, we're moving forward with that campaign, and you'll start seeing, uh, some social media and those, uh, advertisements go out, notices.
Yeah, just wanna make sure that people can do that, and, and, you know. Fire safety and people remembering what they gotta do, so, these are my comments, and welcome, new council member, and welcome to, um, the new city treasurer, um.
Also, member of Ethan.
Thank you, mayor, um, I attended the holiday parade, really great job, staff, it was amazing, it was a lot of fun. Um, and then also the tree lighting as well, it was a great time, and just a couple of events, um. Few weeks ago, I was invited by the California governor, um, Gavin Newsom, to. A women's leadership luncheon, it actually took place here in the city of Coachella at the library, so it was a great event, um. They invited several women in leadership positions across the board, so it wasn't just elected officials, but it was also. Um, you know, women working with nonprofits, uh, different leadership positions, so. It was a great opportunity to make a lot of connections, um, we also had, um. The, or former assembly member, Lardo Garcia, um, his staff, you know, helped put that event together, and then also Desert Healthcare District, so. It was a great event, um, we sort of went around the room and just talked about, you know, what motivates us the most. And how we wanna help our community and uplift other women, so it was, it was a really good, um, a really good luncheon. Also, on the twenty, November twenty-first, I was invited to a tree planting event at Cesar Chavez Elementary School. Um, really cool event, I was very intimidated when I had to talk to a bunch of the students there, um. Because I don't think we're ever as prepared, we're, you know, in my case, I'm. I'm okay speaking to, like, adults and we're talking about different things, but the kids. They, you either capture their attention or you don't, and they'll make it known, so it was a little bit intimidating to me, but it was fun. Um, so Codex Creation Committee, it's a newly, um, created nonprofit organization. And they applied for a grant from I I D, so they were able to secure, um, about thirty thousand dollars. And with that, they were able to plant trees around Cesar Chavez Elementary School, thirty-one to be exact. And the kids, you know, they had the opportunity to use the shovels, and, and it was really cool too, to kind of, you know, talk to them, and. Um, they were excited about the pistachio trees is what they're gonna get. So that was a really cool event, and then December fifth, um, we had our economic subcommittee meeting. Um, we had quite a few items on that agenda, so we were able to provide staff with feedback, and then. Just really quickly on some stuff that I asked staff, and specifically with Selena, and we're gonna be working on these things. Um, just getting an update on our facade improvement program, she did mention it's been launched. So she'll be, you know, coming to council and letting us know how all of that is going. Also, um, some time ago, we kind of talked about in that subcommittee meeting. Um, of launching a farmer's market, so I'm excited to be able to see that happen in the city of Coachella. I think it's gonna be something amazing where we are able to, um, have our vendors, our local vendors participate. But also our local growers, and so I think it'll be a really great opportunity for us to be able to do that and collaborate with them. So looking forward to getting an update on that. And then I also asked staff, um, that in the new year. We work on putting together or creating a strategic plan, um, when it comes to economic development specifically. I know we've talked about having one citywide, but I think it'll be important to start working on one. That really emphasizes or focuses a lot on economic development, and so, um, and. Selena, you know, she, she mentioned it would, you know, be a good opportunity, so hopefully we're able to launch that in the next year. And then the last thing for our economic subcommittee meeting was, um. I wanna see how we can take a little bit more advantage of our existing. Infrastructure that we already have, um, so I know the stage here at Veterans Park. Um, I, I wanna see how we can better utilize it when it comes to recreation, um, so I shared with them at, uh, in Orange County. They have something similar, and they put on little activities using the stage. For families and kids, and they just stand around and, um, you know. There, there's a, like a power, um, kind of like a PowerPoint sort of, that kind of goes up a little. Uh, on the stage, and it captures the kids' faces and it turns them into oranges, and they'll just stand around doing that activity, so. Hopefully, we're able to maybe come up with something where we can use that stage. And really, the purpose of that is just to bring people downtown as much as we can. Um, I think that the more we are able to do that, the more our businesses, our small businesses are, they're going to do better, and we're also going to attract. More small businesses into the community, so I'm excited to maybe come up with some ideas with Selena on that. And I promise I'm almost finished. On December seventh, um, I went to the community cleanup, it was a lot of fun. And we were able to help a family, an elderly person, so again, thank you to Renee, uh, from Code Enforcement, who. Gathered all of us, and also Anai, who was able to invite the Residence Academy, it was a great, um. It was something really nice to be able to do and give back to a community member. And then lastly, today we had our Ag Summit, um, committee meetings, so we had one that focused on marketing and communications. We're doing a lot of good work around that, and then we also had our regular Ag Summit, uh, committee meeting, and so. We're working on a date and just being able to put all of that together for the next year, and those are all my comments, thank you.
You've been busy, Mayor Proca.
Um, like everyone else, I also attend the holiday, holiday parade, as usual, it's always a big hit. Um, I still think that we can get it down from the four hours to three, two hours, it's still very long. Um, and while, the, where the stages and where the judges are, it's a nice area because either performers are there. But just think about all the other streets where families are just, are just waiting until the performer is done. And then they get to, you know, kind of see the next performer, so while it's an advantage to the kiddos there. Um, in front of the judges, it's still very hard for the other streets where we have family members and kids. In their strollers and seniors, it's just too long for them. And so, you know, years ago, council member Jacinto did, um, recommend for the performers to be moved to Veterans Park. So it's both hap- it's happening at the same time, so as the, as the, uh, entry. Uh, groups are going through, then they make their way to Veterans Park, and so the parade is going on, and then the. Performers are happening at the same time, so it reduces the time, it doesn't eliminate the stage. Or the performances, or the judges, or the trophies, it just allows them to be done simultaneously, to kind of reduce that time. Um, I also got, um, re-elected or reappointed to the California League of Cities Riverside County, uh, Executive Committee. Uh, we are looking for a new division, um, board member. Um, and we wanna keep it in Riverside County, uh, it was held by, uh, Lisa Middleton, who's, who's highly, highly respected. Um, not just here in Riverside County, but throughout the state of California, she's an incredibly intelligent, uh, and strong woman. And so it was a big loss when, when, um, she left us, so that, uh, board member seat is open. And we're gonna be looking for someone out there who's very strong. Uh, that we can get approved so that we can keep that seat in Riverside County and outside of SoCal. When it comes to economic development, that is something that I'm going to be focusing on the next year. And when I talk about economic development, it's all of it, it's an overhaul of everything that we need and. To bring into the city and bring, uh, and to start generating new revenue streams or increasing them. Because the services that, that we're needing are growing, we have, you know, staff, uh, personnel that's been added, and so we need to make sure. That we're also developing in the city, that includes, uh, businesses, hotels, developments that are pending, we have a lot of pending developments. And so however we can, uh, negotiate and partner with them to get them going, um. It's just, it, it's just not a benefit to anyone to have developers or applicants sitting there, uh, and not moving forward. Uh, also the small business community, the commercial building, the commercial businesses, the cannabis businesses. Uh, and then also connecting, uh, beautification to it, so we're talking about economic development. So we're talking about economic development, we're also talking about beautifying our city. And you know, I talked about a bit before the last time about doing more community outreach uh in some of our residential communities. I know that staff did an outstanding job, an excellent job of cleaning up the the one uh home. That was out, I think, by Bagduma Park. There was a lot of um uh complaints and concerns that had came uh forward uh for that specific home. And so I think that you guys tapped into something that's that was very successful. Um and just having that grow so that we're helping out some of our seniors or some of our hu- uh families who are struggling. And you know, out of code, you know, they're just not compliant. Any any anything that we can do to really help support our families. But uh the facade program, I think, was a great um idea, a great program. I'm still, uh I disagree with with the requirements, uh and that's again because it's very limited to businesses. And I I've talked about this before, Selena, I brought this up two times before is. You know, what the facade program allows is that. Uh you invest up to a hundred thousand dollars for to to the facade and the city matches it. The problem is that a lot of these buildings are very old. And so inside the building, they're just not in compliance, so you're talking about them making all these. Renovations and changes and and costs and covering us up in addition to then putting in fifty seventy five thousand dollars. For the facade for us to even match it, so it's really not seventy five thousand, it's it's actually a lot more than that. And so if we can identify how we can help out where that business uh or that old building. Is making the changes inside to get it operating and then we still have been helped in with the facade. Because it's a benefit to all of us, if we have buildings that are sitting there because they're out of code compliance. Inside, but we're saying, hey, you invest seventy five thousand dollars to the facade. You know, we match it, well, if the building inside can't operate or is that old. Then you know, it's not going to be very successful for for any of us. And so, you know, I have been asking for that um program to come back. Um I'm looking forward to the Christmas holiday dinner, um I hope that we've extended the invitation to. Uh Myra and Yadita as well and and their family members so that, you know, you guys are included and. Get to have your kiddos around. And with that, I I'm very thankful uh to all the executive team members, to our staff, to those who are here. You know, you've committed a lot of your time, it's a lot of work. Um I know that you do it for no other reason, that you genuinely genuinely really care for our residents and. Our city and so I am very grateful for all that you have done this year. I'm looking forward to the new year and I'm looking forward to all that we can accomplish together, thank you.
All right. Well, I went to the parade as well, I left early because I was a little sick, but. Good job, I thought the attendance was really, really good. Um I did get approached by. Uh a few folks, yeah, our parade is pretty charming, if you look at like the other parades in other communities. They're not as charming and so there's like a, there's a bit of a magical feel that happens in downtown with with folks and it feels like. Small little portion of Disneyland, so one of the things that's that's occurring is Palm Springs, right, they do NBC Live. And NBC actually broadcasts the Christmas parade. Well, I was approached to look at maybe doing a Spanish version like on Univision. And but the 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 caveat though is that they're limited to a two hour slot. And so the idea that they threw out was saying that, hey, the performers can come in. After or before the parade and they can get judged by the judges before the parade. And then that way it would limit the parade to two hours and then kind of keep it moving. Um so. Think about that, I mean, do we want to highlight, go on Spanish, bring in. Like Spanish commentary, let NBC do the or Palm Springs do English, Coachella could do Spanish and I think that'd be kind of cool. Just to highlight like the kids, it would be working with Aces and telling them to. You know, hey, each one of you are not going to be able to perform, you're gonna be able to perform in the beginning, but as a school, you got like two minutes. To do your little performance and then keep it moving, they do it in Palm Springs. How do I know, because I went on Saturday and I saw it in Palm Springs and Aces was there and they were doing it there, they so. So they act like they don't do it, they're doing, so something to think about. Um and I I I bring that to our attention and see if we want to take a look at that. Uh I've gotten a few concerns uh uh and feedback regarding Frederick Street at Bagduma Park. Our fields are being used, the leagues are out there. And at Frederick Street, there's a lot of no parking there and so because parking is. Minimum and optimal and utilized, a lot of the cars are parking on Frederick Street. And our ranger is quick to ticket everybody, boom, 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 he's ticketing and you know, everybody's getting charged thirty one. Thirty seventy five or whatever that is. And so it's it's broadened up a lot of con- concerns, so we can, we look at Frederick Street. And maybe we want to do from like the hours of six to ten, parking is allowed. And then after that, if it's a public safety issue, give us the feedback, but. Take a look at Frederick Street regarding parking, particularly when all the leagues are out there playing and everybody's doing their thing. Last night, I was uh, I I I was, I was, I was looking out my front window. And I was like, man, it's like, I I thought there was like a. A uh fireball in the sky or something like that, but it wasn't, it was all the new LED lights that are going, being installed. In our neighborhoods and so the LED light is different, it's bright. And every kind of reminded me of like the, you guys remember that uh like Roosevelt Christmas? Where you know, the dad goes into the garage and he's like. He's like, hey, you know, trying to get his Christmas lights on and everything and he goes into the garage and and he, it turns on, it's like super bright. Anyhow. It is what it is, we made the decision, but. Like all of our streets, uh all of our neighborhoods now have these new LED lights. And so it's important that we just uh like put out a message that, hey, we have new lighting in the city, it's LED. It's everywhere, I mean, I I I don't know if you've noticed, my neighborhood has got, we got brand new lights. It's pretty bright, like the whole neighborhood, like it's good, you know, just from a public safety standpoint, but there's. And it leaves shading and everything at nine, it's it's really cool, you know, but but just informing the neighbors, if we do a. If we do our uh our weekly or monthly or quarterly bulletin, just letting people know, hey, we got new lights in the city. And uh I know, I know, Dr. Martin, you 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 noticed the lights too, it's like everything was lit up. It's pretty, it was pretty interesting, um. I want to come back to uh a a good discussion that we had a few months ago that it should be brought up because we told. Folks that we were gonna bring it up and that's the RFP for the creation of only one league here and those city staff is. Uh uh really supportive of that and so if you could bring that back to the council next meeting, I want to get that RFP out. Uh and then figure out if we are going to consolidate to one league or if we're going to continue status quo, uh I for one. Uh I'm very, uh I'm gonna stick to what I told the community members, hey, let's put out an RFP, let's create one league. And let's uh let's try to have a little bit more peace with the league, so if you can bring that RFP back, get a council vote on it. Uh and then we can go forward on the creation of one league and consolidating all the leagues. I think the faster we do it, the longer, the more time we're gonna have to actually implement the program. Uh the folks, the proponents of it, uh have been, I've been in communication with them. And I remember the council members' common comments up here, every single one, except for Councilmember Perez, she weren't here, but. But everybody seemed to be in support and uh I'm hoping that that that's still the case. But if you can bring that back by the time for next meeting, that'd be awesome. Uh I want to thank everybody for this great year, I thought we had a pretty good. Did we have a record year? Yeah, we did, we had, we had a pretty good record year, we we uh we built a lot of housing. Um we had a ton of grant money, a ton of grant money. Uh we've uh we've started some road improvements, a program throughout different neighborhoods and having fifty. We've got in, uh we're getting new mediums, there's a, you know, a lot of excitement, I will um. Let all you guys know that our growth is actually uh in, it's it's it's. It could, it's gonna probably change, why? Because we have no power and power is becoming very, very difficult. And we have a huge power issue, so if we want to see growth, then we better find a power solution. Uh at this point, the IID has basically told every developer coming into the city. Uh oh, you want, you want to build new homes, twenty million dollars for a new substation, thirty five million dollars for a new substation. And that's creating a huge problem uh for developers and people that want to do business in the city. If we like the progress, then we're gonna have to get creative and take it head on, I know that the RFP. Uh just closed for at least the uh air, the the green zones that we've targeted. Uh but that doesn't, like, that doesn't include any of the infill areas and and that's something that we need to really think about and think through. Uh because if these projects, these info projects can't get power. Development will stop. And that's, that's a new reality that's. Every city's facing Coachella, Indio, La Quinta and the proposal, you know, city of Indio, they. They they're, they they tax their residents, they they added a surcharge to uh their bill. And people are starting to see the bill increases and people have some concerns like, hey, like. Why is my bill going up, etcetera, what are the benefits to us, so we got to really think through everything. Um and then even then, even if we go down that route. We probably won't see a new substation probably for at least four years. So we have to really think through, you know, how we're going to. One, identify what capacity is available and then two, how we can prioritize and get IID to commit to that prioritization, so. There's a lot to be. Uh you know, done and and a lot to do and that's in front of us and I'm not even mentioning the. The water, the water issue that, you know, that we are all aware of regarding probe six and so this council is gonna have. Some very heavy decisions in front of it where it's gonna be. Uh probably some huge rate increases either on electricity and water, so welcome aboard, it's gonna be fun. Uh as we tackle, you know, these issues moving forward, so. I look forward to the conversations in the new year, everybody get some rest, have a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday. Um and have a great new year, have a great new year. Uh we expect to get a lot of good things done on next year, thank you, the floor is yours, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I want to congratulate the city clerk, the treasurer on their elections, the councilman Perez. Mayor Protim Dogato and Mayor Hernandez on their reelection, I want to wish everybody happy holidays, great, as Mayor indicated, great two thousand and five team, appreciate all your hard work staff. And we'll carry it on over to twenty twenty six. Twenty twenty five, sorry, twenty twenty four, I'm living in the future, sorry, great twenty twenty four, better twenty twenty five. Right.
He do work super fast, man, so like. It's a time traveler now.
I'm a time traveler now.
All right, well, with that, we are adjourned and Merry Christmas, welcome aboard.